I'll call this media whole meeting for December twelfth to order with adoption of the agenda. Council chair, second by.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Council everyone. Uh, all in favor? Uh, we'll move on to adoption.
So I just wanted to have an opportunity for additions to the agenda.
Um, what are we looking to add to the agenda?
Um, yeah, uh, just sorry, when we're sort of bringing it down to the wire here with um, staff, uh, it's just regarding um, I, item eleven A, the correspondence item. Um, technically speaking, I, uh, I would like to have it included as part of the discussion under item eight A. So I'm seeking and I believe that needs to be required to be done by majority vote for council. So um, uh, I want to put forward a resolution that the agenda item, um, the agenda be amended to include um, um, uh, the correspondence included in eleven A, uh, uh, with um, item eight A.
Second. I'm saying that, any discussion on that? All in favor of amending the agenda? Host? All in favor, uh, we'll move on to adoption of the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from November twelfth. Council Ellen, second by. Staff staffers. All in favor? Any business arising from these minutes? I see none, we'll move on to delegations and presentations. And we will get, uh, real support and resource up to the podium to present.
If you could bring it, that would be great.
I can't do that. Hello everybody? Thank you, sir. Who's that? There we go. Hello? Um. Worship, you know, state counselors, thank you for having us, uh, like everybody knows, my name is Peter Elson, Jason Keller, and we're here to give you a bit of an update on, uh, since our last update. Um, just progress stuff and answer any questions, yeah? Um, I'll jump right into it if that's okay. Excellent. Um. So, uh, for those that have been up to resort lately, a lot's been going on, uh, one of our, one of our focus projects has been staff housing. Happy to say it's progressed a lot, we took got occupancy earlier this year of units down on your right, that's sixty-four bedrooms, so housing, temporary housing units. And then the building in the middle, um, it's progressed quite a bit, this photo's a little bit old, it's progressed quite a bit past this. And we're expecting to be in the building, March or April is our current timeline, so that's nice, just a reminder, that's ninety-two fully accredited apartments and, um, expanded operation space for the resort. I'm very excited about that. Um. Oh, oops, keep getting the wrong button, sorry. I've been having tech challenges. Um, Slope Side Hotel Carl, uh, continues to progress, um, we're expecting occupancy in that sometime twenty-six. Um, roof is on the manatee side of the building and starting interiors, uh, on the first level, uh, moving on to the second level, uh, as soon as the windows go off. Uh, again, that's a hundred and fifty, hotel with a conference, but still a more scale restaurant. Um. We start now.
He's really excited about transit.
Apparently, I, oh, I am excited about transit, but, um, I'm not quite there yet. Um, most upgrades, so this was a major project this summer, um, and terribly inconvenient for our guests and a lot of, a lot of citizens, but, uh, really happy to say that we were able to open, uh, open the road up, uh, before the season started, late November, quite a few were there for bill, thanks for coming. We're super excited to, uh, you know, to, you know, provide a better access, uh, it'll be even better when we get the multi-use path open, uh, in the spring. So, uh, yeah, so far, really good feedback, um, and I think the, as you enter into the village, the car traffic, I mean, and speed limit change have had real impact on, on safety and viability of that whole zone, so really happy with that, um, I was always throwing pains, he's a little bit better, but, uh, really happy with it so far. I did it again. Like I said. Yeah, let's go train. Um, so this is another shot of, uh, uh, of a new road that we built, so this is at Camozie Airport, uh, so it's a multi-use path and road that's going through that future subdivision. Um. And.
Yeah, so that connects Shield to the junction of, uh, Airport and Nickel, and there's a detached, uh, sidewalk from the travel surface that will connect Lee Road to Spruce Road. It's not open just yet, but, uh, road is built and, and ready, but we're not starting any development over there for the winter, so we'll be in close for the, through the winter.
But you take that one?
Yeah, so we're, we've got a one point seven pot megaliter reservoir at Steph's Ski Hill at elevation, and it provides, uh, domestic and fire flow uh, water to the south of the silhouette and ties into the, into the city system, create redundancy for the entire and, uh, allows for the build out of the resort and future growth in the airlights. It's been a big project, it's been a struggle to get that one done.
Um, the, this past summer, we, uh, put quite a bit of time and effort into expanding, uh, some trail numbers, we did, uh, a new diverted trail through the Aspen plates, really improved that zone, and a couple other, uh, one other blue flow trail. And then a lot of invested time and resources into rebuilding existing trails, um, to, to a lot of great feedback. Did it again? Only one, only one, there you go.
Yeah, so the, the Cabot Gulf construction has slowed down now with the winter, but, uh, in the fall, we were able to, uh, with Cabot, uh, get the final conditions for, for the, for the permit from the province, um, some of the, uh, basically the final conditions were around, uh, repairing area setbacks and work, working in and around waterways. Uh, so we have the conditions for those requirements and, uh, working with Associated Environmental, third-party uh, firm, and their biologists, um, have a plan to move forward on the Gulf, which has been a little bit of an outlier for a while, so, uh, it's, uh, it's good to, to know what the conditions are versus the gray area that, that has been for quite a long time. And, uh, looking forward to getting the, the golf course built. Uh, one majority of next summer will be construction and then some growing over next fall and, uh, introductory golf the following year and, and golf. Hopefully completely the year after.
Better transit service, uh, so they're, um, so starting lack, so we're, I guess just passed our anniversary, but comes in this somewhat amalgamated service, um, and to, to great feedback, got some transit numbers, so, you know, we saw a lot of growth in ridership in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, you know, one from a hundred and five thousand riders to a hundred and eighteen thousand riders. Um, and I think it's going to improve dramatically again this year, so, you know, um, I think really feel that this is, uh, as we, as we amalgamate truly with transit, the opportunity to get people out of their cars, uh, not only our visitors, but our residents as well, it's great. And, uh, we really would like to see and support pushing this service to become a free service so that we, um, really can have, you know, maximum impact on traffic woes and parking woes around the city. Uh, so, yeah, we definitely, we, uh, we, we support it financially, but, uh, really try to put a lot of effort into buying.
And to span on that, I think the two dollars is a little bit of a barrier, not in terms of price, but convenience.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have record breaking, breaking days in opening, and our parking, which we have about fifteen hundred stalls, is complete, so that means if, you know, if, if even twenty percent of the people took transit, that means most of the people drove up to the resort by themselves and found a parking spot. So it's, the more we can get the local population, as well as people staying in hotels in main town, that is one across the street to take transit, the less congestion, the less risk on the road, the less environmental impact, everything just keeps on getting better and better, and the, the leading resorts that you see around North America and, and into Europe, that the transit is covered through their tourism taxes, you know, around hotel rooms and whatnot, but I think, uh, yeah, that's something that we're sort of grappling with a little bit, it was a real struggle to, to hear there's problems with parking when ninety percent of the people were season pass holders, driving by themselves.
We really did see, we even carpool dramatically, the density of people around, in the resort, we track how many people per car, uh, on average. And COVID really, as you expect, made that density thin out, but we haven't seen that recover, so we're going to be trying to pull some numbers and kind of encourage the public to, to change their habits. Um, new for winter twenty twenty-five? Um, speaking of parking, um, the, this went out to the public and some of you probably have not seen it, so we've, we've done some rejigging with our, uh, parking upgrades, so on the main being, um, we have a brand new paved lot as part of that Camozie upgrade with the traffic circle here, that's a fully paved, uh, marked lot with paved path all the way to Gondola. And then we've, uh, added parking last summer in the south, um, and some of that still, still getting complete, we'll have it complete for our peak holiday seasons down here in the south, here's a little bit of work still to be done. But, uh, well, you know, once we have everything in place, we'll have, you know, equal or more, or more parking than we had previously, um, but, uh, again, we really do want to see people using that traffic.
And to that end, we've made the, the drop off the most convenient spot at the resort. Like you cannot get a better spot, get out of the vehicle to get to the resort than, than the transit, the public transit drop off.
Yeah.
Which is, so we've highly prioritized that.
It's image of it right there, so that's the spot where you're, you're gonna, you'll, if you, if you utilize transit or you're, you're dropping off folks, they're gonna, they're gonna stay on paved surface all the way all the way basically right to the level, so it's the most convenient, easiest way to go. Um, terrain upgrade, so, uh, we did quite a bit of work on the mountain this year, um, a, a lot of it was in, on the, on the north side of the mountain, in the river zones, uh, we completely rebuilt the Big Woody, which was failing, uh, we did set up a bunch of works, a bunch of work, um, in the Sally Alley and Chopper area, um, clearing, just rerouting and creating a little bit more green skiing in there, um, then we did a big, a big project on North Bowl access with, uh, removing a lot of rock to open that up, uh, make the access better and more snowy all year long, so, um, ton of work and I think, uh, it'll pay off in, uh, in experience, so love to hear feedback if you're skiing on a mountain. Um. We added two new groomers to the fleet this year, so, um, uh, one free groomer and one, one brand new witchcat, uh, so again, adding to our, our, our ability to, you know, groom, uh, more and more than that, uh, more frequently, so. And that's Andy, our head, our head groomer, he's very happy with it. Um, new this year, we have a mountain host program, uh, so it's a volunteer-based program where we offer daily tours, um, with, uh, with locals. So there, you'll see them, you'll see them out, out on the slopes in kind of yellow jacket, um, they're, you know, helping people find where they're going, uh, and then they're scheduled tours for folks. So newcomers and those who have a hard for life with the mountain. Um, if anyone has spare time, is interested in participating in the program, uh, you know anyone, we're, we're always, we're looking to build it more with people that, uh, have a good understanding of it, so. Definitely invite you or your friends to engage on it. I'm really excited about seeing natural selection tour, term for year three, um, this is a really big deal for, for us, from, uh, I think for Rebel Stalkers destination. Um, and the max exposure, yeah, last year's total exposure, uh, was over a hundred million, uh, different viewers, uh, so that's one of the most viewed, um, definitely most viewed non-ski racing event, um, produced, so we're really proud of what we've been able to do with it, and this year's going to be even better. It's all, all of the, the last two years, we've had some component out in, in the backcountry with via subrhetanders, uh, but this year, the, the preliminaries and the finals are going to happen right beside the resort with ski and access, so if you're, if you're feeling like it, you can go watch it, both, both the preliminaries and the final. And that's March ten seventeen. Um.
This. That's sort of the resort update, we got a little bit of update on, uh, where we are with some real estate, uh, projects that we talked about earlier and, and how we're moving those ahead. This is a, this is an interior shot of a Raven Town Home, which is down, uh, in, in Farwell, we have, uh, uh, twenty-six of them near completion, uh, of which, uh, three of the buildings are, are complete, and we have about eight, we have eight homeowners living in them right now. Um, and, uh, there, we've got an open house there today, actually, with our Realtor partners, so we've got, uh, still a few, few more to sell, um, uh, twenty-two to sell, so if anybody's looking for a three-bedroom, three-bath town home, uh, we can help you out. Um. Go on, yeah? And then new projects that we're sort of in design development that we're hoping to bring to market in, in twenty twenty-five, uh, well, this isn't one of them. But, uh, this is coming in twenty twenty-five. But I, I, yeah, so we've got, we're working on various, on the various neighborhoods, so the one down off of Airport and Nickel that we called, uh, Arrowhead. Um, uh, we'll be looking to have a, a condo project down there as well as a townhome project. We'll probably go a little slower on the townhome project, and so we see Raven get absorbed, um, and those, those, that, that enclave is, is, uh, is STR restricted, so it's, it's an area that we would compete directly against Raven. And then we're, we're looking at, uh, uh, another project, just a, up the hill, across the street from the first phase of Mackenzie Village, we've got a townhome project and a, uh, and a, uh, and a condo project in design development there, I think we've got it later in the, in the presentation.
Sure.
Um, and, but we.
Sure. Um, on, um, the project this past summer, um, other than some of the scheme improvements, uh, we're focused on our suspension bridge cliff project, I talked about before. Um, but we're, we've got, this is rendering, but, uh, the trail work is in place, it is in surfacing, um, all the concrete. Um, basically, uh, the foundations are in place and we're just waiting, so the spring will be hanging the bridge, putting in the, uh, cantilever platform, which is right here. Uh, with intent to open, probably open this new attraction, um, uh, for July one weekend, this kind of summer, so, super excited about this. Uh, we really, it's a really, uh, approachable, soft adventure product that really anybody, uh, can, can access. So a great opportunity to facilitate people into nature with incredible views, easy access, it's only two hundred meters from Gondola. Um, basically the trail, so the platform will be accessible, so, and really anybody will be able to utilize this, and, uh, I do think it's, really do believe it's going to have a major impact on, uh, summer visitation, um, and, uh, so really excited to get it rolling. That's what I wanted.
Yeah, this is Arrowhead, this is, this, we actually have a better rendering than this now, but we're, we're working on, uh, a replacement product or an advanced next product to, uh, to Raven. Um, and so again, uh, the townhomes, uh, and, uh, and, uh, some condos, uh, we are looking at townhomes that would have income suites in them as well, um, to, uh, to expand to the local market as a, as a mortgage helper. Benchlands, so this is a little bit higher end, this is, uh, targeted towards a resort owner, um, not mandatory to be rented, but can be rented long-term or short-term and, uh, or used as a residence. Uh, we're, we've got three fourplexes, potentially four, fourplexes planned, uh, but we'll, we'll launch them in fourplex at a time. Uh, this is, uh, some conceptual, uh, work we're doing to expand, uh, called the North Village, so that's the, the current gondola line towards the new paved parking lot, the, the distance between Gondola and the parking lot, we're looking at, at, at in-tilling with a, with a, a couple of buildings. Um, the, uh, the, this view is from the, is basically from the loading line of the Gondola, and we're looking at a, a hotel, condo, hotel combination in that, in that area, uh, with all of the main floor, uh, plan for services that a ski resort of about three hundred thousand visitors, which we are, would expect to have, like, rental shops that, that's a little, that's sized bigger, better washing facilities, um, uh, it's season pass holder walkers, which will help with transit. Um, a bit more, uh, definitely some more F and B, uh, we'd probably love to return the Mac Tavern, uh, to an all-ages sporting, like hangout facility versus a, a alcohol-serving establishment, and then move a, a bar over to the other side of the, the village, um, and then a little bit of retail, but we're, we're being extremely cautious around retail. Um, you know, the, the real, the retail hub for us in town is right there, and we want to make sure that that sort of is retained and, and, uh, is prioritized, because I, the, the population and visitor population combined is not big enough to support multiple retail destinations in our area. And if you look at some other resorts, they have overbuilt retail and, uh, it, these smaller independents don't survive because the, the big corporate stores run them as loss leaders, and that's not really what we want to have here, that's not the Rebel Stalk experience that our guests are looking for, and so it's not something we're looking to provide. Uh, this is a, a villa project, so this duplexes, there's a strip of land on Mountain Road as you head up from between Mackenzie Village, or Mackenzie Landing and, uh, Monashia Estates, and we've got, uh, uh, eight, uh, eight of these villas planned in that area that we're working through design development. So we don't have land for sale for, for big houses at the resort, but we're looking at, at offering, uh, house-size half-duplex to, to buyers. And this is a, we wanted to keep this in the, in the, in the presentation, it's the same concept plan that we had before, um, the concept is largely the same, some of the, the arrangements are, are slightly different, but it's, it's, we're still following the same con, the same framework, if you will. And then the next one's just the, the phasing, sort of, sort of a reminder where we're focused, we're focused on the Gondola string, as you see it, to the north in blue. Uh, the community housing neighborhood is, is the zone here, which is Arrowhead, we're, we're working in there as well. Um, and, uh, that's where we're focusing, uh, growth at the resort for this, for this next little bit. We are working on some things around air, airlift, um, seeing if we can see some improvements to the, uh, to the, uh, to the airport, um. I think there's some, some really good opportunities there with, uh, for some commercial travel, a lot of coastal specifically, but I think there's some, uh, good opportunities there, and, and, you know, community safety and redundancy, it's, you know, medical evacuation, that sort of thing as well. Questions?
Awesome, thank you too for the presentation, um, it's great to see all the work that you've been doing over the year, um, as well as the consideration for the downtown and the retail aspect, um, it's great to hear from you guys. Uh, is there any questions from council? Council Jerry?
Actually, we're, uh, to the chair, what if you have any timelines for any of your projects currently?
Um, yeah, I think the, the, the various real estate projects that we looked at are in the five, and we're looking at getting that, the cut, the, the golf done. Um, and, and those all in the sort of the next five years or so, it, part of it will will depend on the economy and, uh, and the external influences, like the US political situation and, and, you know, so there's a lot of factors at play, uh, and also the market, you know, like, uh, you know, I, I would have thought that Raven would have sold faster, I, I mean, it would have been nice if we could have had them slightly less, but it's a function of land cost, labor, materials, fees, interest, and, uh, that's where we end up, so, um, yeah, it, it will be market-driven, oh, to, to a certain extent, and, uh, and, and external forces driven, but our intent is to move, move ahead. We, we have a lot of money in infrastructure in the ground, that Camozie Road and that reservoir were not inexpensive adventures, and we've got, we'd like to do more resort investments as well. Um, and, uh, we, we need to, uh, we need to sell some, some real estate to, uh, to, to, to start to try and break even.
Gotcha, if I can follow up, uh, do you have a five, ten, or fifteen-year plan for the North Village expansion?
Yeah, so the North Village, we, we are prioritizing design development on the North Village, and we're looking to start that project as soon as we can get that hotel across the street finished, and that's scheduled for twenty twenty-six, so we'd like to be in the ground in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
Awesome, I got one more for you, although it's on the presentation, you're gonna get it today anyways, uh, any updates on new lifts?
Oh, well, I think, um, I would say that would be market-dependent as well. Um, I, I think it, we talk about this a lot, um, and it's, uh, if, if we can get a little bit of traction around some of the real estate offerings that we're, we're offering, um, I mean, part of it is bed base. There's, there's no, the, the day ski traffic outside of the local population is, is near zero, we don't have a Vancouver that you're driving up to ski for the day, and nobody's coming from Kelowna to ski for the day. Uh, it's just too much, so we have to, our, our lift demand is, is heavily tied to how many beds are available in town. So we have to, we need to grow the bed base. We need more, we need more beds. And there's risk around that, I mean, this is an old conversation, I know you guys are studying STR, but, you know, the, the, the provincial government and regulations and, and candidly, local governments and the, 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 in the, 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 the muddiness of, of where the law is going to end up is, makes big tourism investments difficult.
Awesome, thanks.
And Council Donald?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, the update, it's, uh, really good to have these sessions, uh, time goes by really quick, doesn't it? It seems like we just had it, but, uh, it's good, there's some new stuff. Um, a couple questions, uh, comments, questions, um, so first on the reservoir, so is it commissioned now or, or when will it be?
It's, it's operating, and we're going through a commissioning cycle right now. So the final bits of the deficiencies will be, will probably carry us into the new year, but it functions today, but it's a, the, 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 the transfer process on a, on a piece of infrastructure like this is usually four to six to eight weeks, and we're in that process right now.
Okay.
Director Black could probably comment more, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly, we're in that state.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah, I think at the Public Infrastructure Committee would be good to have, uh, from a city, city perspective, where that's at. Um. Transit, so, y- yeah, interesting, and this, uh, not, not a new theme, so the, as an individual counselor for our residents, I would be very supportive of free transit right away. Uh, the other component of, um, you know, free transit, sorry, free, free transit, which isn't free. Uh, for the, uh, because it's heavily, heavily subsidized, um, you know, getting to that point, if it is tourism subsidized as opposed to, for the, for the tourists.
Yeah.
It's tourism subsidized, um, I think that would be a, a good conversation and where, you know, where that piece comes from. Uh, you know, I, not, you know, we haven't really had that discussion at the council level, you know, with, with residents, uh, it's already heavily, heavily, uh, subsidized by taxpayers, we, there is a certain amount of free stuff that already happens for, that have, those that can demonstrate need. Um, and maybe there's a stepping stone, just some ideas that are out there, and that's just as an individual. Um. The, yeah, so that's good, um, yeah, interesting on the, the, the Raven thing that that isn't sold, I would have guessed it would have been sold too, of course, we've, the city's been kind of on overdrive and getting developments going ahead, so your competition accelerated compared to, um,
Yeah, nobody else you can move into.
Right, but you can see that.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure you're looking at a trajectory where that's at, and I'm guessing that's why you're cautious about when that gets introduced, because there's a lot coming online very, very quickly, um.
It's that, and then, and the other one is the, uh, is STRs, and where that, have, what level of enforcement will happen outside of the resort area, for example? Whether, you know, whether the, the, the province decides to mandate non-resort areas, things like that, so it's.
Yeah.
Those are big market swathes, that, that we don't have as much control over as, well, we don't have control over, but it's, it's just, um, no investment falls, follows sherry.
Um, just, just a little bit further on the short. Um just just a little bit further on the short term rentals. Um. Yeah, it's been a very, very rapid changes in regulations, not just rebel still, not just British Columbia, not just Canada, but. Other places, you know, just reading about Madrid, massive, massive changes that they're looking at. And uh. You know, a decade ago, Airbnb was everybody's friend and now it's everybody's enemy kind of thing and uh. On on the short term, there's a question, you may you may not want to answer it because there might be a slight contradiction, but. On the short term, so we the the province, the city, other places have gone very fairly fairly aggressive on shutting down short term. That the Airbnb style accommodation. On the short term, is that. Affecting your experience base for people that. Would like to visit rebel stove but can't find accommodation. And and there's a contradict, why I say there's a contradiction for you because that's a competitive force. So. Yeah, I would think you don't really want them, but at the same time, on the short term, is that? Have you seen?
No, no, I I I think we're we're pretty bullish that we need them. Um yeah, I mean. And to the point where the mountain resorts branch has gone out to all of the. The resort municipalities and made it very clear that MDA areas are not not don't fall within. The STR restrictions and that councils don't have that tool within MDA areas. So that would include all of this, all of the red resort lands. Because other municipalities who've opted in said, well, it's in the it's in municipalities. Well, this is a is a crown agreement here that that supersedes that. But. We need, if we took short term rent, if the city were to opt in like other municipalities have, we would probably lose twenty percent of our skier base. That's not helpful and it's not helpful for anybody downtown either. So I would, I would, I I mean, we're also in the real estate business, but we're not. We're happy to compete on a level playing field with surety. One way or the other, like we don't get to make that decision, but we. Were we're not trying to take business in someone else.
So through the through the chair, if I may, the um, yeah, thank you for that very honest answer. It's it's. Uh so what what are the contradictions we had? So. You're calling it arrow, the subdivision there. So in voluntarily, more or less voluntarily.
Yeah, it's voluntarily legally.
Yeah, yeah. So you put this, so there's a bit of a contradiction there, right? Yeah. Do you want to make any further comment on that? Like I I see it right away and.
It it is. It's, I mean, we. So our business is is. Is um is obviously the resort tourism business, but. We're also, if we're not the largest, we're. Close to the largest employer in town and we've got aggressive growth plans, as you see. And so we need, we're gonna open a new hotel with conference facility with a new chef, then a golf course, and then. We need, we need people who live here and want to live here. So we 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 recognize that we have a role. In the housing that relates to the community, not just to the visiting guests. And we are, that's why we started in Raven, you know, you know, quite honestly, and our, we've got staff who live there now, who bought and live there now. Um and we anticipate the first enclave within Arrowhead. Which is tucked neatly away at each shield, which is another permanent resident neighborhood. To be that that type of of owner. And the two owners like a STR. And a uh and a somebody who's raising a family don't necessarily mix that well. So we'll we'll build this enclave, we're committed to that. If if we need to pivot around dead base, you know, pending like. Whatever the market does, and whatever the legislative conditions are, we will have to make those decisions at that time. But we are staying the course where we are. And yeah, I mean, I think our our product in Arrowhead. We are, we're anticipating that we'll get. Hopefully, a a decent local pickup. Within our management level and new management level. As well as uh people who've been in here for a while, looking to downsize or looking for something new. That's our, that's our. That's our thesis today.
Good. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh and to the chair, thanks Peter and Jason for coming to the time today. Um and. Just a question related to transit and I might just give director black heads up because I know it's a partnership thing with uh. Uh the city uh as well. Um you're hoping to get people out of the cars who are driving up there for the day, including local residents. Um. What can we do in terms of partnership to achieve that goal? Is there something you'd like to see? How can we help towards that? Now that we have increased infrastructure in place?
Yeah, I mean, I it's. I haven't worked on this file like Peter and 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 and. And direct black app. Uh but I can tell you anecdotally in the US examples. The it's a way to tax tourism. And then apply that fund and get community benefit. Whereas you can't typically do it in most North American, just you can't use tourism revenue for non tourism expenses in most. Taxation models in North America. So it's a, it's a sort of a workaround a little bit. Um we've seen that elsewhere, but I I can't speak to the the current or future plans.
If I may, dear worship, uh as a council, um amenities. Uh new equipment. Um funding uh sources outside of. Municipal funding, i.e. putting uh new owners on some of the projects in town to. Not build parking. But provide a bus pass instead. Um the carrot and the stick analogy, if you would. Uh those are the tools that we need to apply here. Reduce parking, make it more inconvenient and make. The alternative transit, preferred alternative, that is the key. But we need those sticks, though we don't quite yet have them. First year, we get the new equipment. I think we'll see another huge jump in ridership. And if we are successful, that would be the following, this following, next winter. Uh first set stuff and then working with our partners to create the opportunities to make. Three, which is a great goal to have.
If I may comment, um and you know, and I think a lot of emphasis is put on, we're really happy for partnership. Steve's been great driving this forward as a personal mission. Really appreciate it. Because I'm 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 passionate about this, not just as a resort operator, but as a resident. And for years, watching buses go by, they're empty, it's infuriating frankly. So it's really good. Just I'm. Super proud of the last year, not just people going to the resort, which is what we tend to end up talking about. People going all around the city, people coming downtown, people going to different zones using transit. Which you never really used to see. So I think the opportunity is very real and really right in front of us to. To get people coming downtown on transit, not just going to the resort, to to put everywhere that has a parking issue, we all have parking issues. Um that that's the kind of, that's what transit provides. So. Definitely encourage uh councils, they um have projects, I think, for them to to look at that through that lens.
Talking to a land planner in the US, similar, like a little bit more further along in the development cycle than rebel still, but. They they're talking about five parking stalls, like one at the hill, one at the hotel, one at the grocery store, one at the bar. And then one somewhere else that you need for somebody who decides to get in the car and go everywhere. And so that's how they got their head around. We need to. We need to figure out how to make transit work. And and you know, I'd say the other thing that we're, we're going to be working on as a company is as we. We're gonna build a hotel and and in Kelowna at the airport and it's one they want to award to do that. And we're going to be working hard with rebel stove transfers and Kelowna transfers and whatever else we need to do to get people to rebel stoke. On a transfer service. And if they can do it that way, rather than renting a car. With summer tires and coming down, that's all the better. So um if we can make it the most convenient way to get to and from rebel stove. Um and then when they're here, they're it's convenient to get around. And I think uh. We can, we can get it done. I think about the sky train in in in. In Vancouver, like if you want to get downtown, you can't get there faster on Uber and. Been driving from from the airport, you you take the train and it goes every twelve minutes. So if we can get something like that, that's every twenty minutes and it goes till. You know, last call and goes, it's early enough so that people can get to work. I think we'll find a. A good use of it. It will take a while. You know, but it's uh. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
If it's possible, is one more question for the chair? Yeah. Uh following up on um a discussion of uh short term rental policy changes that were came down from the provincial level. Um you know, certainly for myself, uh I agree that from my perspective, it's not a black and white issue. There's a lot of area of gray. Thank you for sharing your concerns about uh, for example, balancing uh, you know, uh need to attract investment for for building and also. Uh practical concerns uh for operations in the short term, that kind of stuff. I'm trying to get it right. Um in terms of, you know, as you you, I'm sure, certainly you're aware, a couple of months ago-ish, uh council uh sort of. Put forward a roadmap of how to approach this issue um going forward locally, uh since the provincial legislation. Uh uh allow or you know, uh allows us uh flexibility on where we go and it's and I think, you know, for us, it's a. A big issue and I think, you know, the impact of that provincial decision, especially on uh. Resort municipalities that have an option to opt in is going to be quite big for us. It's going to be a driver of our politics. In the coming years to come, and it's certainly something that's uh big on the radar. So my question to you is i- is in terms of uh. That question and driving towards a policy framework that works better for communities like ours, um have. What approaches um are you trying or suggesting? Is there a way to. Uh expand the dialogue a little bit about how we go about this question? Is there any sort of. Thoughts or feelings or policy directives that you're following or you know, other groups that you're coordinating with to. Try to uh bring your perspective to to the discussion?
Uh yeah, I. I just, my my sense is that sweeping changes has unintended effect. Always does. Um. Uh I think uh. Yeah, I I I I also. Feel that, I mean, I. Looked at mountain towns in the US where. Local governments have eliminated short term rentals and. There is a significant portion of the population that was able to stay in that community because they had that secondary income, that muscle income, if you will. Um so it's not black and white. Um. Yeah, it's a, I I do. Struggle with the mixing of uses within neighborhoods, just because it's really hard to manage. How somebody is living in their house and. You know, you know, I I worked quite a bit in the Okanagan and you know, we had golf groups in a house next to somebody who's living there. And that didn't work out very well, you know, guys sitting on the patio. You know. Drinking and talking and being loud and so I do, I do, I'm very cognizant of that. Um. You know, we've uh. Yeah, so. But. So I. Yeah, I don't know how how people choose to 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 live, if you know, if they want to live in a unit that's. It's in a building that's all that's primarily short term rental, that's a totally different lifestyle. And I think that will preclude a lot of people wanting to live in that building as a full time resident. So we'll, you know, the stuff that we develop will probably try and put in the way to ensure customer. Um hopefully, the customer, the homeowner. Has the experience they're after. I mean, we have the. We're not going anywhere, so we have the uh. We're easy to find after the fact unless we create problems for ourselves down the road.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a better answer than that, sorry.
That's great. Nice. Awesome. Thank you guys for the presentations.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to uh A A. The heritage adulteration permit and development permit for four hundred and four four McKenzie Ave. So. This comeback because the resolution put forward by councillor Orlando um. Needs some cleaning up. Um I feel it's too vague. It doesn't give our staff enough direction to go back to the proponent for. What should be done. Um but yeah, let's open the floor up to discussion. Campaign here, councillor.
Somebody else wants to. Um yeah, so just I guess from the introductory thing, there was uh. Councillor Lamb, thanks for the motion in the, including the whereas it's been unusual in local governments, so yeah. Small and local governments, but I think it was useful. I believe they're useful, they're useful for me. Um. The. I'm contemplating uh some of the issues that we were struggling with as a council meeting. Uh it seemed to me that there was um. Four issues that were actually three or four issues that were identified by the planner. That are all being lumped together, so it makes the conversation very difficult. So specifically zoning, and I think that's, in my view, it's sort of kind of a non-issue, but um. There's the zoning question, uh there's the heritage. Uh question, there's the parking question and there's the variance uh question regarding the loading zone. Which uh. That last one, I think, is likely a non-issue because it's being proposed in the new zoning by law anyway. So that brings it down to two primary issues, the heritage and the uh. The parking, request for parking variance and the associated items around that. Um so I'll just state that from a per, you know, from the introductory perspective from from my end, it seems to me we should just. Have to commit the whole here. I think it would be helpful if we discuss those items individually and perhaps give. Council ourselves a recommendation on each one of those pieces, rather than trying to come to a complete consensus. So that that's my thoughts on. On how we might proceed today.
Yeah, um yeah, I agree. Um I think breaking this into sections, um I think we want to. First talk about parking and the loading zone, um because as it stands right now, with the comprehensive zoning. Rewrite, um those would be variances that they wouldn't have to come back for. So if we are looking to address those things, then we need a recommendation to go back to staff. To change our zoning bylaw um first. And then we can talk about form character. Director Simon, is that correct?
Um. So through the chair. If council, I I I agree with the the nature of the conversation. Let's unpack these issues one by one and then you can give direction to staff and the applicant about any changes that you would like to see based on unpacking those issues. If council does have an issue with the parking variance, again, council is under no obligation to support any variances that come forward. We just recommend and you could even do it as part of the next item on the agenda. That there's a recommendation to yourselves at council to direct staff to change the zoning bylaw before formal council consideration in the new year. So we can do it as a separate item later. We just don't want that to be missed and it's really important for transparency to the public. If council isn't supporting the variance right now, we don't want this to come forward in a few months without the variance and then all of a sudden kind of squeak through without people really understanding how that happened with other variants. Because again, technical bylaw, not everyone's sifting through it in the same capacity. So as long as at some point, there's a resolution directly has to change the bylaw. That would be uh that would be prudent.
Okay, thank you for that. Um so around the table as councillor, are we wanting to change that? Councillor Cherry.
Thanks, Mayor. I think it's best to bring up uh. Director Black to uh kind of unpack the transportation master plan that we all voted on and why. The parking variance wouldn't be required in the new zoning bylaw.
Sounds good. Uh Director Black.
Thank you, worship and council.
Sorry to catch up. If I did, with the chair. Very.
The book we adopted. A year and a half ago, two years ago now. Um. The goals of this document are one to. Make or encourage people to get out of their cars. We have a really strong mode shift right now with active transportation in the community. As you saw, the numbers for transit are increasing incredibly well. That will reduce the need for parking if we continue down that path. Currently, the downtown has very little. Parking per business. Um for instance, the Monashie, there's no parking for that specifically. Uh we utilize the patios in the summer. And we do not see a huge parking issue because of the patios. So we're losing probably ten fifteen percent of the parking stalls within the downtown core. For that very purpose, when we. For that very purpose, when we have the highest ridership on a daily basis in that season, roughly seven thousand cars a day visit Rebelstoke in the summer, about thirty-five hundred in the winter. So peak time is summer, lots of space available, you can walk, loading zones, liquor store, Sabon. We can count them on one hand, I believe, for all of the commercial core. The alleys work. Do we need to have a loading dock for every business in town because they are a commercial business? According to the, the Transportation Master Plan, we do not have a parking issue. There's a perception, I believe, is a big component of that. I also believe, and this is anecdotal, that much of the parking utilized downtown is by the people that work downtown rather than providing the convenience for visitors, business users to visit those businesses. Those spots are taken by people that work downtown. I think that's kind of a high-level summary of what's in the T M P. Questions, specifics that I can try and answer. It's been a while since I've looked at the T M P in detail. However, our goal is to get people out of cars. And if we can, putting more parking in is not the stick we want if we want people to get that mode shift. Providing lots of parking encourages parking, encourages auto trips. Downtown Core seems to function really well. This is the direction you've directed staff to pursue with. That's how we're pushing forward with multi-use paths, transit, speed limit reductions, all of those things to make our community more livable and have less cars. That's my conclusion.
Thank you. Counselor Sanders.
Question through the chair to Director Black. Are we currently, is my understanding, maybe you can just summarize for the, for the general public who may be listening. We're currently reviewing our parking policy for the downtown core. Is that correct?
It is a project that will be undertaken for year twenty-five.
And when should we expect that to be completed?
Fall of twenty-five.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions around the table or just to parking?
So, it's been the mayor, the CEO, so we're, we're going to focus on parking solely at this point. Does that, do I understand that correct?
I think if we have Director Black up here, that's the first thing we should pack.
So the, the planning, on the planning side, on the zoning bylaw, can, can we get it, I want to make sure that it's clear in my understanding, assuming the zoning rewrite happens, this development, if it was being on the table after the zoning, the new zoning bylaws in place, what parking requirements would be required and what variances would or would not be required in this case? I think that's a planning question. Yes?
Yeah, through the chair, there would be no parking stall variances required or loading variance required with this application as it's within the MU one and MU two, which are the new zones. For the C one, C two are post hotel, where they have restaurants, would only be provided for the hotel use for parking. So the variance in front of councils for the restaurant parking variance, and then also the loading variance. So those two variances that are in front of council would not be required under the new zoning by law rewrite as the C two is included in that permission.
And few were shortly mentioned on, twelve parking spaces would be required, which is what they're currently providing for right now through a combination of onsite parking and then cash in lieu. So onsite, they got five spaces, cash in lieu, or sorry, onsite they have seven, cash in lieu would be another five. And then they do have six spaces with an informal agreement. And we only call it informal because it's not registered via restrictive covenant where the city would be a party to it with the church. So you can think of it as they're providing for twelve parking spaces right now. If the new zoning bylaw goes through, they're required to provide twelve parking spaces. And they're just providing it through different means, onsite and cash in lieu.
So just for clarity on the, the Catholic Church parking, is that, or is that using that mechanism to fulfill some of the regulatory requirements? And again, the two scenarios now and after the zoning bylaw, assuming it goes ahead as, as, as written.
Through the chair, no. The, the, that is a separate agreement that's in addition to, and because they could not normalize it via restrictive covenant, which is what our bylaw requires right now and what it would require in the future, we can't formally count it. Right?
So I, I guess through the chair, in the absence of others, as far as, as far as the, that parking with the Catholic Church, that handshake agreement or whatever it is, I don't know that even should be part of the decision-making because there, for a couple of reasons. It, it has a feel of sort of smoke and mirrors, you know, an appeasement kind of thing. And so from my perspective, I'm just going to assume that it's a non-issue because it's non-binding, it can disappear. You know, we haven't seen the, the provisions from the Catholic Church. If there was some kind of formalization, if it was a true formalization where there was something registered, then, then that, that would be fine. But I, to me, I just have to discount it in its entirety. If we were considering it as a part was, you know, to convince us on parking variances, then I think we would need those, having those other tools in place. And that would trigger the question, you know, even does the Catholic Church need, need its parking requirements? We don't want to go into that discussion here. So I, I, I would like to just put that part out of the, the equation of our, in our minds. And certainly that's where I am. The, the question on the parking, that's a bigger question that we keep on wrestling with. And perhaps we'll come, we're going to be looking at the zoning bylaw rewrite. Again, that's a separate item. Is, is, is that good or is that not good, that question? Because it will start to put the flavor going ahead if that goes ahead. Thank you. Counselor Chair.
Thanks, Mayor. Just while Director Black's up here, I was wondering if you can let us know on the Transportation Master Plan. I believe it outlined feedback from residents on the downtown about parking. By chance, do you have any of that feedback available or the numbers?
Off, at the top, at my fingertips, no. My recollection is that the, the public did not feel that there was a parking concern in the downtown. Now, we did do those, that study in the summertime. Again, I don't know if that has any bearing on the wintertime when, again, traffic is roughly half as much as it is in the summertime. But that public outreach did not highlight a large parking issue or any parking issue in the downtown.
Appreciate that. Just to tee you up a bit more, it was more than fifty percent, actually prefer to decrease in parking is what stated there. You mentioned there was, I think, seven thousand average trips in the summer. Do you remember what the winter numbers were? Okay, thanks. Glad to look the floor to anybody else that wants to ask any questions.
Counselor Sanders.
A question not necessarily to Director Black, but I'm wondering if, if Mr. Giff can give any elaboration as to any bylaw concerns regarding citations being issued in the downtown core for, for parking infringements or, or maybe speak to, speak from a, a bylaw perspective as to any parking issues that bylaw may be seeing.
Chair, absolutely. So our parking enforcement is predominantly focused in the downtown core area with some of it extending up to the general resort area, but predominantly in the downtown core. We do see, further to what Director Black had stated earlier, we do see a lot of it is, is kind of, kind of contained around that, the business area. It is likely directly related to the employee use of those parking spaces. So as far as the overall concerns related to parking from our perspective on the enforcement side, if council directs us to, we can all, we can definitely spend more time focusing on enforcement, heavier enforcement of the, excuse me, the time duration parking. That is something that we, we have not focused major efforts on at this point, predominantly more around the twenty-four hour parking or parking more prohibited, parking contrary to signage. But I can say throughout this year alone, we have towed approximately forty-five vehicles to date. And that is, that's throughout the whole city. It does not contain just the downtown core areas. So if council does want to direct us at a future date, we will gladly start focusing heavier on the time duration, which could resolve some of these concerns.
And to be clear, that's the two-hour, we have lots of two-hour parking identified downtown, but we're not enforcing that generally.
And then just a follow-up question in regards to complaints and, and prioritizing what sort of complaints we're getting. We often hear a lot about S T Rs. We often hear a lot about pardons. What would you say are top three complaints that we're seeing in front of bylaw right now from a city perspective?
Up through worship, you nailed on that short-term rentals and parking enforcement are the two highest. Animal control is, is following up behind now. It's, it's starting to pick up on the animal control side. But parking, general parking complaints as well as short-term rental are predominantly our largest.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chair, yeah.
Thanks again. Through the chair to Director Simon. You mentioned at the public info session on the zoning bylaw update that we're fast-tracking our parking. Forget the terminology here. Fast-tracking our parking, you could help me out.
Management strategy.
Management strategy. One of the issues I've noticed is that a lot of the heritage management areas doesn't, don't actually have parking at all. And they utilize their, either sometimes the alleyway, but usually just the space in front of their house in the city right away. At the information session, you mentioned a number of items that could be looked at in this parking management. Can you let all of council know what some of those are?
Through the chair, Counselor Cherry. So our team has worked with Director Black. It's preliminary right now, but we do kind of have a consulting team that could potentially be lined up to do this project. Again, pending budget approval from council for twenty-twenty-five. But some of the items we'll be looking at is metered parking, resident parking passes for some of the areas that are adjacent to downtown. And an important piece to note is when Mr. Black did the Transportation Master Plan, it reclassified a lot of our roadways that were historically arterial roadways or collector roadways to local roadways, which opens up the potential for more driveways to come in off of them and people to provide more off-street parking on their own property. So there are opportunities for residents who are looking to secure individual parking spaces that would be dedicated for themselves through private driveways to work with the engineering group to make sure that it's in alignment with our service standard in the Transportation Master Plan. But the metered parking as well as the permit parking is something that will be examined as part of the parking management strategy. And one thing that I think is important to note about this whole parking conversations, this has been studied extensively throughout North America. North America is very car dominant, and we're all in the midst of this transition. You go to a Walmart, park it back at the Walmart, you might have to walk four blocks to actually get into the Walmart, three blocks to get into the Walmart. But people don't care about that because it's built for the vehicle. You can see the destination you're going to. You park downtown, it's built at the human scale. The buildings are close to the property line. The sidewalks are wider. There's on-street parking. It might feel like you have to walk further to get where you're going, but this has been quantified and it's been studied, and you're actually walking the same distance. So it, it is a little bit of human psychology when there is this perception of parking issues. So we're very excited to do this parking management strategy that council expedited to do in twenty-five as opposed to twenty-twenty-six, to start to quantify that. Because we don't want to make decisions without good data, of course, if we're just going to go ahead and start implementing parking metering. It's not ultimately needed. So all these items will be examined, and then we'll have a plan for how we go about implementing them, if there are little pinch points here and there, to address some of it. But the T M P already calls for a lot of it, right? So we'll be building off the work of the T M P.
I have a follow-up.
Yeah.
As a follow-up, a lot of the questions or a lot of the comments we got from the public on this one were direct, sorry, through the chair, were directly related to parking. Can you elaborate more on the permit parking and what that could entail? A few options potentially?
Permit parking, it could entail certain areas where it's only permitted for residents to park there, right? If there's certain walks that they're experiencing it. But we have to also acknowledge too that when you're living within an area that is a hundred meters or fifty meters from downtown, these are some of the spillover ancillary effects that you may experience as a result of living in such close proximity to downtown. You're never going to have this invisible line that says, people who are going and visiting downtown are only able to park on this side of Third Street, and no one's going to be parking on this side of Third Street. That, that's what happens when you get these transition areas. Hence why we have that downtown fringe commercial zoning. So people get a better idea of what type of development they're going to see, which would generate some of these items like parking in your neighborhood, right? If you live in a purely residential area, you're not going to have business-related parking within your, on your street because there's no businesses there. So it's important to note too that this is kind of what comes with the territory when you're living in an area that's immediately adjacent to downtown as well. It's part of the perk. We get to live adjacent to downtown, but there can be spillover effects from the downtown. So the parking management strategy is going to quantify this. We'll look at permit parking that could be resident-only parking in certain areas. A lot of cities have done that, right? So it's all a lot of logistics to figure out on, number one, is that actually needed? And then number two, what would the process be to actually implement and make it work?
Okay. Well, I thank both of you for having this offer, giving us this opportunity to both educate the public and ourselves about what's going on in both the Transportation Master Plan as well as these only by law and updates on parking. I encourage everybody else to ask any questions they have.
Anyone have any questions in regards to parking? Counselor Leonard.
I just for clarity, the chair, a question for staff. In terms of requiring restrictive covenants on parking, could you provide some clarity on what the threshold is for requiring it or not? In the past, I believe council has, why not consider those as part of this application as Council Palmer pointed out? It could just change if there is nothing required.
Through the chair, I'm just pulling up our zoning bylaw regulations. So the way the zoning bylaw is set up, it says, here's how much parking you're required to provide that is off-street parking. Applicants have a few different avenues on how they can achieve that off-street parking. They can obviously construct it. But there's many reasons why constructing it may not be desirable for certain circumstances. So the zoning bylaw gives some flexibility. You can construct it. You can pay cash in lieu as long as you meet the cash in lieu conditions. Or you can secure it off-site within a certain distance from your subject property for certain uses, as long as it's secured via restrictive covenant. So it's really something that's at the discretion of the applicant on how they want to proceed. And if they can't proceed with any of those options, then they have the ability to request a variance, which is what has happened in this particular case. Now, Ms. Hartling can give more details if you guys are looking for it on why staffers are above the variance. But one of the big reasons obviously is the changes that we're proposing within the zoning bylaw that allow for more shared parking, trying to adapt to the community that we're trying to build. We want to build a community for humans, not for vehicles. We want to meet our climate targets, and the more parking infrastructure we build, it's going to make it more challenging for us to meet those climate targets. So there's all this rationale as to why the variance is supported. But those options on how you can meet the off-street parking, it's a matter of how the applicant is proposing to meet those. And in this particular case, they're requesting a variance in light of some of the items we've discussed. Does that make sense?
Through the chair. So the, so another way of looking at it is that's the decision of the applicant to pursue a variance in this point, in this case as opposed to securing cash in lieu. That, that is, is that, or sorry, is the, instead of securing a restrictive covenant. So my question would be, is that still an option in lieu of doing a, in lieu of applying for a variance, they could not seek a restricted covenant to avoid the variance?
Through the chair, the counselor. So the cash in lieu option that they did utilize in the zoning bylaw does have criteria. So it is providing a minimum of thirty. So it is providing a minimum of thirty percent parking on-site. So it's not a, it's not ever scrapping parking to zero. Uh, so provided that cash in lieu option is providing money into the city's parking reserve fund, um, but still providing some of the parking, so thirty percent on-site and also one EV charging stall. Um, so you could never a hundred percent use cash in lieu as an option. Um, and then the off-street parking on another lot, that's the covenant option. So if that applicant was able to find off-site parking where the owner of the property was willing to enter into a covenant within the distance prescribed in the bylaw, that is another option. The, the operational aspect of the off-site parking was not able to meet that criteria of the bylaw. Um, so it is an operational consideration, but not formally addressing that bylaw requirement. So that is why the applicants also opted to apply for the variance. So you'll see they're providing on-site parking, cash in lieu, and variance.
And through the chair, Counselor Orlando, if I may, I think I can understand where you're getting at. Trying to give some direction to the applicant where maybe this is an option they can do. Um, I would recommend that if council, again, if there's an issue with the parking variance, just state that and say that you don't want to support the variance right now. And then let the applicant determine if there's different avenues utilizing those tools in the bylaw or making some changes on-site to meet the minimum parking requirements rather than, um, forcing it upon via restrictive covenant. Because these, these restrictive covenants, they're really tricky unless you're the property owner of both properties, because they're in perpetuity. And so if you registered one now, the city isn't going to authorize discharge unless you can find some alternative arrangement, right? So it, they, they do get really, really tricky to get both property owners to sign off on them, especially if you're not the benefiting property owner. Um, so again, if council's concerned with the variance, recommend just be really clear that we want you to provide six additional parking spaces on-site or we want you to provide six additional parking spaces overall. And then the applicant can go back and reevaluate how, how that could be feasible.
Thank you.
Um, question for Director Simon. When it came to the church parking lot, um, I think we talked about it, that it was just past what the zoning bylaw allowed for off-street parking?
Uh, yes, it was almost sixty meters and the bylaw requires fifty meters. I would have to double check, but it was a few meters off.
You know, to the chair, uh, just to convolute it even more with the zoning bylaw rewrite, we'll be very happy when this rewrite is done so that we're not trying to deal with two bylaws at the same time. That's proposed to increase to a hundred and fifty meters, but to restrict the uses that are capable of qualifying for that hundred and fifty meters, so that it's still more tightly controlled. So just to throw one more wrench into the, into the game.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, so yeah, oh, Counselor Palmer?
Well, if you have more comments.
I, we've just in regards to parking, but yeah, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, um, certainly I'd kind of like to get the parking thing and then move on to the heritage. I think it's a bigger, a bigger thing. Um, the, um, I'm close to being prepared to put a motion recommendation to council, uh, so that we can actually debate. I think there might be some variances and that would be if the committee of the whole recommends to council that the parking variance not be supported, it's clear. Uh, I'm not putting that motion on the table right now. Some people will be, uh, I recognize will probably be opposed to that. Um, before I do that, because I'm, there's a bit of reluctance and if somebody else puts a motion, some motion on, that'd be, that'd be great. Um, so on, on many, many aspects, I concur with staff on the idea of, um, perceived parking, uh, problems and real parking problems. Uh, the, the, the sort of small town convenience of being able to stop right in front of the store. Um, I think I'm, normally I either walk or cycle into town, but I did a drive-in today. So I, I think I might have drove around the block trying to get a closer spot. And I, I reviewed myself in that, so just parked a long ways away, walked a couple of blocks. Um, so I, I, I get that part. The idea that we don't have a parking problem. So, uh, in, in the transportation master plan, I don't think we wrestle with that. And some of those comments regarding that there isn't a real parking problem, that, and, and then we, then on the other hand, we say, okay, that's the number one or number one or number two complaint uh, for bylaw enforcement. So there's a bit of a contradiction there. So do we have a problem or do we not have a problem? If we don't have a problem, stop, stop parking enforcement. And forty-five vehicles in a small town is a lot of vehicles that's being towed. And we're not enforcing a lot of the other stuff. So if we were enforcing the two-hour zone, how many, how many vehicles would we be towing in that scenario? So, so there's a bit of a contradiction and certainly from the perception of the community that it, there is a problem, a, a real fear that, uh, you have a, basically a boutique hotel and a new restaurant now is taking spots. And the other contradiction that I saw was, okay, we want to get people out of their cars. Uh, so those cars, you know, going back up to the resorts, we talked about that and saying, okay, let's get everybody on the bus going up there, which I strongly support that kind of concept. So those out-of-towners that come into town to stay, those cars are gonna stay down here. So there's all these sort of little twists and turns. Um, the other com- comment is on the, um, uh, regarding the, the, um, the parking reserve, we don't have that plan. And so we're doing these variances without a plan. And it, I guess what I wonder in my mind is, well, if, if different entities are contributing to, um, parking challenges, should they not be contributing more? And, and maybe we should be more steadfast on not having parking variances, recognizing it's contributing to some of the, the problems. But make sure we actually have a parking reserve is gonna be doing something useful. We haven't just haven't got there. And that's not, that's not the fault of the developer at all. So those are just some of the, uh, uh, comments I have and, um, you know, if there's nothing else from other members of the committee, uh, you know, I, I might be prepared to put a motion on the table at least to get the debate happening. Uh, and, and if we're gonna go into the, the debate, I, you know, if we're gonna start debating now, I think it would be better if we actually had a motion on the table and see where it goes.
Yeah, cool. Sorry, uh, I got a question first. Do you want to do it first? Thanks, Mauricio. Uh, through staff, um, from your number of the pub, from reading a number of the public comments as well as some of Counselor Palmer's, uh, comments, I feel that there's a misunderstanding that by allowing this parking variance, we're essentially allowing for street parking. And I just would like, so I threw the chair to Director Black. Uh, I'd just like you to clarify if that's what we're doing here. Or not, either of them.
Through the chair, no, we would not be allowing any on-street parking.
Okay.
If the variance is supported.
Just get that away.
Uh, so again, through the mirror, um, before I put the motion on the table. So where is that car gonna park? It's coming into town for a specific purpose. There is no place for it to park. So where is it gonna park? So there's a contradiction. I will put the motion on the table mostly to get the debate going. That the committee of the whole recommends that the parking variance for this development, put the whole thing in there, uh, not be. There was a second for the, just to get the.
The second?
Yeah, so having made the motion, I, I, I struggle a little bit for making, making, putting that motion on the table, but I think we need to really finalize this, that, that discussion. We're spending quite a bit of time. Um, I, I'm of two minds in the idea of how do we reduce those impacts over time? Uh, and, uh, we, this, this council and the previous council, probably every previous council has supported variances to parking. So there's a bit of a contradiction there. Um, sometimes we have, sometimes we haven't. And, uh, so I, at this point, because of uh, the lack of, um, understanding within the organization at the council table of what we're doing about parking, that I'm really questioning whether we should be supporting any, any variances until we figure out what we're doing. And it sounds like that's a year, that you're owed still. Thank you. Counselor Jerry?
Uh, Mayor Lucio, as this is a committee of the whole meeting, I think this may be a recommendation to council?
Yes. Is that not what I said?
I think you made a motion. That's a great problem.
Yeah, so.
You made a recommendation.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, uh. All motions here, recommendations to council?
Yeah.
Um, any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll weigh in on this on the floor. Um, my personal view on this is that we're missing a, well, not missing because it has been discussed or at least mentioned, but it hasn't really come up in the conversation between the committee here. What we're essentially doing, if we do not support this variance, is asking for two parking spots per hotel room. And essentially, it's not, the math doesn't exactly work that way, but we're saying that people who park at the hotel, which I agree, nobody is coming to stay at a hotel and not driving into town. So they will need parking spots to stay at the hotel. Uh, that's, that's what makes sense. But those people are also going to primarily probably be the users of the restaurant. We see this on every other hotel that has a restaurant. It is primarily, uh, hotel guests that go. And then we get a little overflow from people over, usually over the slow seasons, but sometimes during the peak season as well. So the question really is, because the parking spots that are being requested for variance are the specific parking spots for the restaurant. And I realize a parking spot is a parking spot, but we're going to have to go through this, uh, for policy. So the question is, are people who are going to the restaurant all going to, A, be entitled to park in front of said restaurant? And B, are they all going to refuse to park a few blocks away or wherever they need to to walk to said restaurant? If they're just going there for dinner and not staying photo. So with that in mind, and having heard from staff that that specific provision is kind of going to vanish if the, uh, zoning bylaw rewrite goes the way it's intended to go at this point. I don't see a problem with the variance, if I'm being honest. I don't think it is necessarily saying that if we vary seven parking spots, that seven more people are going to be parked on the street in front of this place twenty-four seven. That's not really the way that logistically this will work out. So despite having a second in motion, maybe that's a little bit more of a contradiction as well. I just wanted to get the favor. I don't really have, I haven't heard an adequate argument against the parking variance under the specific conditions that this is essentially asking for one parking spot per hotel guest and also one parking spot per restaurant guest who will primarily be hotel guests. So I will probably not support the motion as it is on the table currently.
Thank you for that. Counselor Orlando?
Uh, yeah, through, uh, through the chair, I was wondering if I could, um, ask questions, uh, of, uh, informational questions to staff um, about, uh, proposal. Um, one of the things I'm considering is an "and" that statement, which I believe was, um, referred to by, uh, by the director planning, further that, and that the, uh, parking be provided on the property. Um, and I'm just seeking clarity, uh, for that, such as underground parking or something like that. So the varied, what is currently varied, put that back on, on provision on the property such as underground parking. So I was wondering, is that, was that the intent, uh, from, uh, um, Director Simon, or seeking clarity? That's right?
Yeah, if, if I may, just from my lens, um, so I was keeping it succinct, uh, uh, based on the planners saying, you know, if we don't support, don't support, throw it back to the developer, let them figure it out. Um, uh, and so I, I, I thought that had some merit. And I think that that's the main reason, because now we're trying to be prescriptive that might be outside of an area, and that would be the question for the planner, might be outside, uh, our, our domain.
Yeah.
Through the chair to Counselor Orlando, um, I do concur with Counselor Palmer. Just because of the way the zoning bylaw is drafted, it gives kind of three options for an applicant before they apply for a variance on, here's how you can meet the bylaw. Build it, provide it off-site with a covenant, or pay cash in lieu. So if council wants to force developments to have the parking on-site and not have this cash in lieu off, option, we again will be recommending that you do a motion arising, directing staff to amend the bylaw to remove that as an option from the zoning bylaw, which is a much broader conversation, says bigger implications. And just to be clear, you know, I think staff and council have the exact same goal in this community. It's, well, we don't, we've, we've seen, you know, we did an analysis, 2021, I think seven percent of our variances are related to parking right now, which isn't a huge number, but our parking regulations are from 1984, just to be really, really clear. So the whole goal of the zoning bylaw rewrite and then as part of the parking management strategy, getting this cash in lieu program really well structured, and we understand what capital improvements are gonna come from it, that the variance would be so seldom applied for because, A, they shouldn't be needed because our parking bylaw is modernized, and number two, the cash in lieu program is modernized, so staff won't be supporting them. But we're, we're missing those two critical pieces and we're almost there. But again, we have a couple more, more hoops to jump through to ultimately get there, just for some context.
Counselor Palmer? Uh, so Mayor Lucio, um, I'll make a comment, then I suggest we call the question. Um, I'll support the motion if I put it on. Uh, the, if it fails, then anticipate somebody will put a motion on the table, let it, uh, variance be supported. But I would suggest we call the question, move along.
Yeah, uh, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Devlin, Counselor Cherry are opposed? Counselor in favor? Trust me. Um, now we want to go into the discussion of the heritage alteration permits and the form and character. How do we want to start this discussion? So I have a recommendation that they want to put on the table so we can start the debate? Or is this something that we might need more legal direction on? Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, um, nope, to council members here, sometimes I get a sense of annoyance when I go on and talk lots. Um, anyways, yeah. Um, so on the, uh, I guess the same thing. So if we're on the heritage things, it'd be good to get to a place of recommendation right now. So there's, um, uh, proposed heritage alteration permit, um, and Counselor Orlando had in his resolution that the proposed heritage alteration permit, um, uh, be denied. Uh, his motion went on to more specifics and I, I would suggest if we do put a recommendation going back to council that it would be, um, succinct to not go into the detail because I'm, I'm certain of the non, some aspects of the non-compliance, I agree that it is largely non-compliant. I'll, uh, I don't know if someone will want to put that motion on the table. I, I think we have made a mistake and have a, a misunderstanding, uh, for whatever reason, on the, on the OCP, uh, the heritage station protection area, uh, the interpretation of certain areas within the document. I've gone through the, all this stuff here and from my lens, uh, the, the proposed building, uh, clearly does not meet either the wording, the intent, uh, certainly not the spirit of, uh, the heritage protection area. And, um, you know, without going into, I guess, going into a deep dive, but on, just on a high level, one, it's, uh, the, the, uh, references in those documents are very specific about retaining the character of the neighborhood, the heritage character, including the styles of that. Um, I could dig into the notes there. Um, and, uh, it's clearly, I, I think it would be a mistake that particular structure as it's being proposed right now. So those are my comments. Being proposed right now, so those are my comments.
Counselor Devlin.
Yeah, no, I uh entirely agree with that, if I'm being honest, that was my big issue with this application as it came forward, um. I, the documents are very specific, they're very clear, there's no language that I've been able to find in the documents that specifies it's only for residential or it doesn't apply to commercial. I do recognize that. Some of those heritage guidelines are problematic for commercial developments in ways that they wouldn't be for residential developments. But I do think that those guidelines were in place before this property was bought, before the development was put forward. If that commercial. Uh, development is has difficulties meeting those guidelines and that commercial development should not be in that area. It's it's not up to us to ignore the heritage. Guidelines in order to fit the development, it's up for the development to fit the heritage guidelines. Uh, and I don't believe that has this presented that it does. And for me to make this many comments on uh form of character about something is very rare, so we pass it off there.
Thanks for that. Um, so yeah, in regards to this building, um talking with staff, they would like more direction into what these council would like to see from it. Saying it doesn't follow the heritage guidelines, these are a little vague, and I think their staff would appreciate more directions. What we want to be as council would like to see. Thanks, Simon.
Good to your to the chair, if I may. Um, staffer also, if council has any questions on how staff kind of got to the conclusion that these guidelines are, there is a little bit of history to it as well. Um, but also I do just want to note if council refuses the heritage alteration permit and of course with section six seventeen of the Government Act. Council is required to spell out the terms and conditions or the requirements and conditions that would authorize the use in density on the lot. So it's not just staff looking for this, it's a requirement under the legislation that council spells this out because the property is zoned. Um, but again, if council has any questions on how staff kind of got to this ultimate conclusion in reviewing the guidelines, um do you hear and answer anything we need?
Counselor Chair.
Thanks, through the chair, rather than uh. Pointed questions, can you just tell us how you got to this rationale? Um, through director.
Through the chair, if I may, and then Miss Hartling or Mrs. Colback, sorry, can can add on anything. Uh, when you look at section three, the justification for the area, it identifies it as a residential area. Uh, it identifies that the residential purposes of land use that has continued uninterrupted to present conservation of the residential buildings and related land use characteristics will preserve the. Continuously occupied railway related residential neighborhood within a spectacular and challenging environment of the mountain vision of the CPR. So like, it's really clear when you look through here that it's all related to the residential buildings. And again, this was done in two thousand nine, this is a really good example of how when the city is not on top of updating its bylaws and its policies. We get developments that come in that are ahead of us, we don't have any good policy guidance, so staff when that happens. We have to refer to best practices and we look at our official community plan that was recently updated in two thousand twenty two. It says that the city adopts the national heritage standards as our guiding document, so that's what staff have referred to to fill in some of the gaps now. That said, when this heritage conservation area was established, um there was recommendations to reexamine the C two zone and take out some of the uses that were identified. As problematic in terms of being compatible with the Revelstoke Station Residential Heritage Conservation Area, which is the name of it, Residential Heritage Conservation Area. Those uses were never removed and they remain to this day, hence this incompatibility that is present where staff have had to refer to the national guidelines now. If council says we have a different interpretation of the guidelines and therefore we view this application not meeting it. That is one hundred percent acceptable for council to come to that conclusion. We just got to be specific with the requirements and the conditions as spelled out in the Government Act of. Because the use in density are permitted, they've been permitted since nineteen eighty two. Council needs to spell out the requirements and conditions to the applicant on what they would need to change. In order to allow for that use in density to occur on the lot in accordance with the guidelines and interpretation of them. I just want to give Miss Colback, who's been working on this since February, again, the opportunity if there's uh anything that I've missed there.
Uh, good chair, I don't think there's anything you've missed, but I I felt why I missed that report as well, and also the attachments that the. Applicant has submitted with the heritage assessment on the McCarthy House, also the heritage assessment on the new addition and. And the heritage assessment was completed by a a professional heritage consultant that did design the downtown. Uh revitalization of Revelstoke, who's very familiar with Revelstoke. Um, so they they go back and forth with the heritage consultant and then. Um, and what you get as a result is the combined. Assessment of the heritage conservation area as well as the national guidelines. Were in filled to highlight a protected heritage house, I'm not going to get too too into it, but. It's outlined in the report and the attachments of creating a story of that place for that protected. Building, um, so it's quite difficult because it's design based, it's really hard to assess design. Um, when you're not the professional. Uh, designing it, but also when you're based on a a document that was created in two thousand eight, that is, it's words on a piece of paper that. Really encompasses that heritage conservation, that neighborhood of those historic homes and how you highlight those, and so it does get into details of. How you do additions on a heritage house and how that looks like. And then how you do new additions and all those additions are really um described as a minor addition. There's no descriptions in there for a major. A big major addition uh where you do have a piece of property that is large enough to accommodate that addition where the use is permitted. Where the zoning allows a a twelve meter height building, but that there's no existing heritage house that's twelve meter in height, so you're you're grappling with. What the C two zone allows, what the heritage conservation area is outlining as distinct. Um. Uh, residential buildings with steep roof roofs, certain sizes, certain. Um, gamble gable roofs, hip joints, like it gets very, very, very specific into how these heritage homes were built. If there's no consideration for additions for the downtown, expanding that revitalizing the downtown. It's maybe something that we need to take as a another project, we're looking at the downtown plan, heritage conservation area. But as staff and professionals, we're working with the applicant. The heritage conservationary guidelines and national standards to get to a point that is highlighting that house and protecting that house as much as possible. While the new additions are minimal and subservient to that. So that's where we got with this one, there's a lot of back and forth, this wasn't the first design that came in. Um, so we really tried to work hard with the applicant there and come to something that would be like that prominent corner of McCarthy House. Um, so if you have any questions on that, happy to answer. Um, just got a good bit of overview for that.
And and to the chair, I do just want to acknowledge this was a very challenging file, obviously, for for staff with that lack of specific policy guidance, and Miss Colback has done an excellent job. Managing it and we really do need to consider. McCarthy House is the first mayor of Revelstoke's house, it will be rehabilitated as part of this and stand the test of time for another hundred years. I've heard some comments that the addition is a boring building, that's part it's part of the point. To highlight the focus on the McCarthy House, so we really need to consider with the recommendations that council will give to the applicant on changes. We don't want to see something built there that is just imitating the McCarthy House, that is the antithesis of heritage preservation. Building something that is imitational detracts from the heritage value of the home that was built in the early nineteen hundreds. So it's a challenging file to grapple with, we completely acknowledge that, and if council kind of can direct staff on the what, we're certainly here to help on the on the how we ultimately get there. Counselor Cherry.
Thanks, Rossals, I appreciate all that info uh from the two of you, uh I'm not a planner or designer. Uh, I have very little background in this, so I will be relying on staff for a lot of the decisions here and how. Your rationale got there for your recommendations, um on page. Day zero zero three or four forty five. Um, there is a design rationale. For this development. I hope everybody here is ready, and I assume you guys have, um, do you agree with the rationale and everything that's in here? Or do you have any specifics that jump out of you out at you? That you'd like to make note of?
Uh, to the chair, are you speaking to the original proposal within the design plan for the updated?
Uh, it is on attachment, some of the heritage alteration permit attachment. Where it has the designs by the applicant.
A zero zero three?
Correct.
Uh, yes, to the chair, staff have reviewed this uh in depth with the applicant and are. That is also how we came to the recommendation of of issuance is working on these objectives of. Of what the applicant has outlined to. Rehabilitate the heritage house to grand prominence of the on this uh quarter of. Third and McKenzie, uh while doing a a minimalistic. Um. But heritage appropriate addition, uh so yes, staff are are in agreement with this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. To anybody else who wants any questions.
Counselor Palmer.
Uh, one question, then comments, maybe a resolution at some point, so the um in uh. This year, uh, the heritage management plan, uh twenty twenty four, of which there's reference. To this, uh, uh. Is. What is the question to to staff, what is the weight of this document regarding regulatory requirements for heritage alteration?
Uh, through the chair and counselor, the heritage management plan, um it is. Uh, not a bylaw, uh, so it doesn't have on the ground provision, but it really guides. Um. Development within the city when you are doing projects or any decision making staff is making, it has action items, a kind of action items in there that we will. Be implementing, we budgeted for, um, it really is updating the heritage program within Revelstoke. Um, heritage historically in Revelstoke with this specifically heritage conservation area is very full base. Um, where the heritage management plan is taking all of heritage of Revelstoke. Stories, places, cultural, it's it's really outlining how Revelstoke can have a. Completed updated heritage program, so part of it is updating the heritage conservation area and form based. Uh, development in buildings, but that's not all the aspect of heritage really well, so.
Uh, thank you, um. So. Want to make sure it's clear, I'm not, I shouldn't enter into it with uh with staff. And I certainly respect uh staff and their process decision making process, but I do disagree, I disagree. Um, so if we go to the the uh the bylaw, number two, three, three, two. Um, and section four point three heritage conservation. Uh, there's reference in there and there is reference, uh so four point three point one on general heritage policies. The fifth item, item E, uh, it does state as um. Staff has pointed out, the city will adopt the standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic places in Canada as a guiding document. For all heritage conservation work in Revelstoke. And the weight in the justification, although I think a lot of it is a bit of a stretch, um is basically coming down to that component. There are, there are four other components prior to that in the bylaw. And I'll highlight uh number C. New buildings and features will be constructed to contribute to the sense of place in development permanent areas. Heritage conservation through sensitive and innovative. Responses to for existing form of character. Uh, item B states will support just distinct character of Revelstoke's neighborhoods by considering the conservation. Of heritage and character building structures, cultural, natural landscapes. And I'll refer back also to the uh the this overall sort of guiding document of the um. Uh, make sure I get to the right, sorry. The chair. Uh, lost it.
If you could read the page number out before you start.
Okay, that's page.
Was one fourteen?
Yeah, page forty two.
Forty two?
Is that the O C P or?
Yes. That is the. Community plan, schedule A.
Okay.
Um. In the, under the um heritage management, um. It states. At the beginning for Revelstoke Station Heritage Conservation Area, the purpose of the heritage conservation area is to minimize loss of historic houses. And street character. And ensure that any new construction is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Now, it's possible that those statements are in contradiction to the standards and guidelines, I haven't. Dove in deep and I'm not sure when the this bylaw was that was there, probably just sounded like good words and I. And in doubt, we scrutinize whether those guidelines should actually apply uh to Revelstoke. However, these other components, I think, are more important, they're highlighted in a bigger way of the protection. Of that whole ambience in that area. The idea that this particular building inside, you know, virtually the same height as the existing McCarthy House. Uh, is subservient. I I think that if we did a survey of that question, is this subservient or not? And the answer would be no, certainly from my lens and the lens of all those people that wrote in, this is not subservient. Um, the other word was um minimalist style. We have a a historic building with the dormers and brings the roof lying down, it has an appearance going down. This new building is a structure that I believe is dominant to the McCarthy House. And does not meet the the guidelines. Um, I think it's going to be a a great error, I think we are making an error in the interpretation. I can understand how it it got there, certainly the. Suspect from the developer's eyes or, you know, how do we do that? Where are the where are the words that support my idea? Um. But that really does not meet the intention. I believe that this should be that, you know. Uh, if if council was agrees that this does not, this development basically does not meet. The requirements. Uh. And put it back to the developer, figure figure it out, figure it out. Um, and um, much like I think was Counselor Devlin was saying, you know, if you can't make it work. That's not council's problem. And uh, so I I I'm sort of prepared. You know, potentially to put a motion on the table that um. Something to the effect that the uh developer be advised that it does not meet the guidelines, but now we have a contradiction from what council, you know, that kind of. Resolution went on the table in what staff is saying, so there's a a conflict. Of um what we're saying and what staff is saying, staff is saying it does. From my lens and certainly from the lens of the community, it does not meet. Either the legislation or it's certainly not the intent of the heritage uh protection area, thank you.
Counselor Orlando. Um, uh, yeah, to the chair, thank you, I'm just a point of clarity for council or the committee. Um, when, and I'm sure um some of you know this, when uh a motion is referred to from council to a committee, it becomes the committee's um uh. Wordings, so the 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 person who proposes proposed the resolution in the first place doesn't have special abilities to withdraw or change or whatnot, so that's just a point of uh. A technical procedure here, so anyone uh has the ability, we have, we're unfettered with the ability to move forward. And is not reliant on uh myself as the first to propose the motion to make those changes, so uh and I have no special power to. I it's divorced from that once it is uh at the table here. And yeah, thanks, uh, Counselor Palmer, for his comments on heritage related issues, I know uh several months ago, uh when um this application arose that Counselor Palmer requested a paper copy of. The heritage plan which he has in front of him and I jumped in on that and got that as well to get up to speed with um uh what's happening, um. With what's on plan and get a little bit more deep, uh get a little bit more into the details as they anticipate. And, you know, I want to keep it simple in terms of uh, you know, what we're requiring, I have difficulty with the the concept of recommending to council. That a few specific things be amended when I feel that the proposal itself at the start is with outside of those things. I feel that the filter process should happen at staff. Before it gets here and that if there are required variants, variances, for example, that those those happen there. And to just speak plainly and get a little bit of my head, a little bit of the documents and the plans and whatnot. Whether it's, you know, parking, as we discussed earlier, you know, we're, you know, I. All the the great statements about, you know, getting people out of cars is great, but what what the what this proposal is essentially doing is putting a whole bunch more cars in the neighborhood. And with, again, with the heritage related thing, to put it plainly, we we've heard very clearly from people who residents and neighbors who say, you know. We're supportive of heritage, we're supportive of our neighborhood, we, you know, we really like the way it is here. We would never have anticipated this, you know, seeing as the the city's working on Heritage Management Plan, and I think it's unrealistic for us. And in council in in DC to say, you know, everybody, you you every resident has to get, you know. Knee deep into every single, you know, technical document in order to understand what's going on. I think within. The requirements here, there are a lot of requirements and guidelines in various. The laws that are in front of us to come up with something that that. Matches the intent of what we're doing. And I really staff are in a difficult position sometimes when you get into the technical. Details of an application and whatnot, but I think we have room to move and find that solution for for residents. And I would just say last, you know, word for. I guess for the committee and also for council members who are in attendance here is that. People don't pay a lot of attention to what we do here at council, but then they do all of a sudden and they are right now and and it's important to them. And I would, I would ask everyone at the the committee table to consider that, that. You know, we've said, hey, we're we're kind of Heritage Management Plan. Hey, we're working on zoning, blah, blah. Hey, we're going to get parking sorted out here and. What the feedback from them is is very clearly that they have issues with that and I don't want to. I think we need to listen to that because I feel like if I was sitting at the other end of the YouTube, I would feel pretty burned on some of the statements about like, yeah, that's not true. You know, I lived within a hundred meters of of this. Development. This is a decade ago and wasn't as busy here, so I know what the situation is like. You know, I want to get everyone in buses as well. But to put a big addition into the neighborhood is probably something different than anyone, for example, giving feedback on transportation faster than I would do. The way forward, I commend Counselor Palmer for paying, getting into the details and getting into the weeds is, you know, I think part of it at this point. Would necessarily mean revising the bylaw because for specifically on the parking issue. And that's not a great place to be when we're hoping in January to, you know, hit the ground running with our new bylaw and then all of a sudden people have had a look, see what what we're proposing and they go, whoa, hold up a minute here. So. Yeah, that's my thoughts on on this so far.
Thank you. Any other comments or someone with motion on the table?
So through the Chair and I guess Counselor Orlando or other counselors, you know, is there. Like some might be just sort of moving ahead with the heritage alteration permit. I get that. However, others that are saying, okay, just a minute, is is there another solution? So staff is asking for a very specific. It doesn't be this, this or that, or, you know, these little technical details. Which is challenging for us that are, you know, trying to provide a broader oversight. Is there, is there a mechanism that other counselors suggest, you know, for for moving ahead? I could certainly put a motion on the table, but I'm not sure if it's. Where others want to go.
All yours and to my perspective, I don't know.
Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that because unfortunately. This is essentially a design question to say that we require. Specific elements of it. Like, design is by its very nature subjective. It's it's very, I agree with you that looking at this, this drawing in front of me, looking at the pictures I've seen. I agree with you entirely that this does not look like the original building in any respect. I understand it doesn't need to. In a good example, this is where I'm talking, but it's very subjective. Like this stands out like a sorosom. It doesn't look subservient. It looks like a brand new. Massive brick block attached to the side of a house and it's especially because the the design. Guidelines we have talk about streetscape. So we have this picture of this house and this attachment to this house. But this attachment to the house is certainly not continuing the streetscape of the neighboring properties. So to give specific direction of that, though, I I don't know because design again is subjective. So those are my thoughts on it. What specific design elements we need, I would say. Better match the color or the proposed new color because I believe they're updating colors later from McCarthy House. I I would say. How do you say make a building more demure? I don't know. So I I unfortunately I don't have any answers for you. I'm I'm on the same page as you. I just don't want to get there. We that's going to satisfy staff's technical requirements.
Counselor State first.
Yeah, I'll I'll go with Counselor Devlin just said, it's really challenging to be put in this position when you don't have a background in. Design architecture. I can understand, I can understand from both sides. I can understand from the side that. We want something that doesn't necessarily try to mirror what's existing. But I can also understand the concerns of the residents when they're saying this is a stark kind of. Direct contrast and they don't appreciate it and that as as committee, we're starting to really. Character condition right now as to how to best move forward. I I'm really gonna. Try to. Encourage all of us to think creatively and outside the box as to how do we best move forward and and. And come up with a solution that's going to work for everybody, you know, not only around the table, but also, you know, throughout the community. So that's my call. Thank you.
Counselor Cherry.
Thanks, Mayor Lucio. I do have a question to Mr. Gibbs. Can you refresh my memory? What does the building code say for steeply pitched roofs on part three designs?
Through your worship, Counselor Cherry. It's not that it necessarily references anything specific for group with group or part four design when it comes to structural moving requirements. With our snow loads, it automatically pushes it into the part four section anyways, which is an engineered portion to be designed only by an engineer. This building. The the, yeah, the the structure would need to be designed accordingly to support those loads, but the actual slope of it. In in theory, you could design anything to accommodate any slope. It's just how much money do you want to spend? That's really what it is. There's a famous saying, building code anything's possible time and money. It is true, but. It it can get quite restrictive when you are looking at some of those larger slopes as well.
Okay. And the reason I I bring that question up to the Chair was just that, you know, in the Heritage Man, sorry, in the Heritage Conservation Area mentions steeply pitched roofs. Which in this time were designed to not hold snow and now they must. So when considering what to put on here as a design guideline or what council would like to see, just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Understands what that means.
Counselor Devlin.
Just a comment based on that. And I'm, I'm not into the place where I'm suggesting it requires to have steeply pitched roofs. That is very. Specifically referenced, however, I do get the point of making it. More demure to the thing. I think the steeply pitched roofs would probably just actually mirror the house to a degree that would probably detract from the house. I can agree with that. However. Just as a general comment, I'm not specific to this. Again, how much money a developer has to spend in order to meet the guidelines of the place they bought the property in the area that they are building. It's not council's per, it's not my job to make it cheaper for them. It is my job to withhold policies we have. So that to me is a non sequitur in how much time and money it costs. It's up to the developer if they want, if we were to come back with those requirements. Developer if that time and money is worth it to them. It's not up to us to consider if that time and money is worth it to them. That's just my general comment of there, but again, I'm not specifying this thing needs steep pitch roofs. I just. Think it needs a design overhaul if I'm going to be blunt about it.
Director Stannen.
To the Chair, if if I may, just to help counsel, I guess, move through this because again, staff, we're not here to tell you the why, just making sure that we're crossing all the. All the Ts and dotting all the Is on the how. And I understand and and don't envy you guys because it does put council in a challenging position with the legislation as worded under section six seventeen of the Act. If council is contemplating refusing the permit, we have to spell out the specific requirements and conditions that would enable the use intensity to be met. So. We're hearing some challenges that are discussed at the council table. I think it's just an overall sense of the amassing of the addition. And the compatibility of the addition with the existing heritage home on site. So just for some rough numbers. The existing building is about thirteen point one meters with a very, very peak up to the chimney and about eleven point seven three meters to the peak of the roof. It's about nine point one nine meters to the midway peak of that uppermost roof. The new building itself is at ten point seven five meters. It's a flat roof. So council could direct that a pitched roof, it wouldn't have to be a steeply pitched roof, even though the guidelines reference a steeply pitched roof, but again, trying to understand this. This policy situation that we're in right now. So you could require that the applicant do a pitched roof on the building and then they can decide what. Pitch ultimately works for their proposal in accordance with section eleven point five point five of the Heritage Design Guidelines. And if council wanted to make sure that the building isn't going to be too tall so that it's subservient to that existing dwelling. You could reference that midway point of the roof that the existing, the new additions do not exceed that midway point. So so there are options. And again, this is where. We're not telling you guys what you should be recommending gets changed on there, but this is kind of the level of specificity that staff would recommend council consider. To make sure that we're online with the legislation and so that the applicant is getting some direction. So that they know exactly what council's here in the community, how you can reflect that in your resolution so that they can make the changes to meet council's intent.
And I absolutely do appreciate that. That's the guidance to get us kind of moving forward in a useful way as opposed to us. Sitting here, considering it.
Counselor Palmer.
So through the Chair, I guess, to staff. Not necessarily agreeing with my perspective, but based on that perspective and the comments that you've made. Would staff have a. Some draft wording for us to think about?
Through the Chair, Counselor Palmer. Yes, and and again, right? Just to be really clear, these are council's bylaws, council's policies, staff make recommendations. It is totally okay for council to have a different interpretation. Planning is tough. It's subjective. Completely appreciate that and we are here to help you on the how you guys tell us the what. And so again, I didn't, I don't want to. I I we're trying to gather what the concerns are that council has heard that they want to see addressed as part of this. We we're. We're not trying to tell you what to do. So we do have something drafted. If council would like to consider it. Throw it on tweak amend whatever whatever council ultimately thinks appropriate.
Counselor Palmer would love you to say that.
Love to hear my voice repeated back to me. Yeah, so it's just through the Chair while we're getting getting that, you know, so the big, some of the aesthetic components. Is there's a different lens. I think others, including the community, has a different lens as to what that building looks like. And I think planning has potentially a creative opportunity there for us.
Through the Chair, just sorry, one minor technicality. Again, totally at council's discretion, but. The legislation is really specific in that if council refuses a heritage alteration permit, you have spelled the terms and conditions. Just to make sure where it is onsite as we possibly can be without going through the long route in legal review and getting so specific on it. Maybe a deferral so that the applicant has the opportunity to amend their plans and come back to council and also address, you know, depending on how council goes at the next meeting. The the parking issue. But again, that's why you'll see it in here's deferred, but again, if council wants to say denied, reapply, put the process, here's our direction. Totally agree.
Okay, so through the Chair, I'm close to prepared to be putting this motion and just, I guess, a reminder for this committee, it's advisory to council, so. Council has the opportunity to change, disagree, disagree, tweak, whatever needs to be done. And so we'll have a little bit of time to say, oh, just a minute. About this or that, there's lots of opportunity. And that's the beauty of the committee. The whole is that we can have a sort of more fluid discussion.
And we can be held accountable for any mistakes we make.
Yeah, there's not that same, yes. So what's written there and all stated, I move that the Heritage Alteration Permit HAP twenty twenty four zero zero two for rehabilitation. And construction of an addition at four hundred, four hundred and four McKenzie Avenue be deferred. And the applicant be directed to amend their proposal in the following ways. And before I state that, so this is a resolution that this committee recommends to council. It's just been read. Provide a pitched roof over the uppermost story on both additions in accordance with section of the. Heritage Conservation Area Design Guidelines. I can certainly tweak that wording a bit, but that's great. It's probably better than what I would tweak. That the maximum height of the additions not exceed exceed the height of the existing buildings as measured from the average grade to the midpoint. Of existing roof line to ensure that additional additions remain subservient to the existing dwelling. I'm going to put also and. Preserve the. Here, can you straight out of it? And is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So just. And I'm adding that because that's coming straight out of our. Heritage Management Plan.
Secretary, Counselor Devlin. Any discussion on this? Counselor Devlin or Counselor Cherry?
Yeah, that just that last line again, I think it becomes more subjective and not exactly measurable. I would also incline any other counselors here to take a look at all the hundred and fifteen comments we've had, if they want to add any additions to this, if. The movers were open to that. If there's anything else that wanted to be changed other than just these. Again, the goal here being to appease the public. While keeping us out of. Big regulations.
So through the Mayor, just in response to that. I'd love to put a whole bunch of things in there and reject it, quite frankly. Because I I think it's just generally not in keeping. However, with the good advice of staff. Making sure that I stay within. And council stays within regulatory framework. I'm a bit reluctant to add stuff. Having said that. I dream about this until it comes back for council again and may have some comments at that time and reviewing in more detail some of the comments from the from the public. So good point. Maybe others have something.
Counselor Devlin.
I just wanted to, I think, I think we've maybe glossed over a important part of this and I just wanted to make it clear for the record. I am wildly in favor and supportive of the proposed. Changes and upgrades to the McCarthy House in general. I just want that very out there. I don't know how the rest of council feels. To me, I I. Not a design guy, obviously. I think I've made that very clear. But to me, that looks good. It keeps in mind, it's there's, there's nothing I would say negative about that. So. When this goes back to the applicant, I I do hope that that is mentioned at least unless other people have our. Statements, at least from my personal perspective, that part requires, in my opinion, a tweaking of that. I know it's all part of the same heritage alteration permit. So that part to me is entirely to me, yeah, it is simply form and character of the. Addition. I am in no way, shape or form attempting to impede them being a restaurant and hotel or any of those things. I am simply. Looking at form and character of that. And I think this encapsulates at least a start to where it might be, maybe all of what I need to feel comfortable moving on, but I'd have to see what new designs first. So. Just wanted to make that.
Counselor Cherry.
Thanks, worship. Thanks, worship. With what was just said in mind of a form and character, if I can ask a question to the Chair, Mr. Gibbs. In regard to the addition, what type of materials can be used as per regulation or Part 3 of the Building Code for non-combustible materials? So currently the design is with brick, what other materials could be used?
Through the Attorney. There's many alternative materials that can be used, non-combustibility. We'd have to look at whether the code will allow for non, or require the non-combustibility of the construction aspect or whether it's just the exterior cladding. With the exterior cladding, there are many different options. There's also options to use combustible materials when treated with a not fire retardant material or additional materials behind those. So it, it does, the code does allow, again, this is where the code allows almost anything with time and money. There, there really is that flexibility of many different materials, but you could do concrete materials, it, again, depending whether it's the concrete that's required, whether it's the constructions that are required to be combustible or non-combustible or the cladding, that would, that would dictate whether it could be, say, like an ICF type of construction where you would have a combustible material as a part of that assembly. But we have not yet done a full comprehensive code review of the structure at this point. It's a relatively building permit stage, but there, again, there is some flexibility with that.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. And the reason I bring that up is there were some comments both at the table and through the public that they didn't like the brick and they didn't enjoy that this was mimicking some of the brick buildings, both in the downtown core as well as the church up the street. So I just wanted to see whether the materials might be available if council or committee the whole would like to recommend something else as a number three here. Again, relating to form and character.
And the comments on this motion before I call the question? Counsel Devlin.
To the Chair, I just want to just get a little clarity on point two. With the measurements, what is the intent and what would the actual cap be under those as worded?
Through the Chair, Counsel Devlin, the way that it's worded right now is the new roof structures wouldn't be allowed to be higher than the midway point of the uppermost roof structures on the existing dwelling. So they're at about, like I said, 11.73 meters to the midway, or yeah, 11.73 to the midway point, so they can't exceed that. When you go to the top of the chimney, it's just over 13 meters right now. So it would be 1.5 meters to the pitch of the roof on the new additions, lower.
Just for clarity, through the Chair, so on the back shore of the sofa to the peak of the roof, halfway.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And just one more question through the Chair, these are two recommendations. I do want to perhaps ask for amendment or ask for advice on the very final words that were added there. Could we tighten the wording up in certain, the neighborhood to include the heritage conservation area or something more specific or something with a little bit more legal
So through the Chair, and I got a couple other comments. So the reason I chose that wording, again, going with the heritage management plan that we just adopted this year. The purpose of the heritage conservation, quoting directly page 110 of that document, the purpose of the heritage conservation area is to minimize the loss of historic houses and street character and ensure any new construction is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So that's why I chose those words. I'd be amenable to some other wording, but that's why I chose those words. I don't know if that makes a difference from your lens. And as you're thinking about that, just to comment, that can be more anecdotal than staff, the, that, that roof line thing, so we've got the McCarthy houses like this and then we got this structure like this right beside this. So visually from the pleasure of the eye, you're looking at this thing and you're saying, okay, this is kind of the height and so is this other structure feels, feels taller. I think people would say it feels taller. So I think what the planner has done and it's done in other areas is to create that aesthetic through some regulatory wording, the aesthetic sense that it isn't dominant and that's, that's why I suggested it feels dominant to me and I think the community. So I think that's the reason behind that. And then the Chair, just the other point, I, so this is a, the, a direction to the applicant. There's a question, once that comes back, you know, assuming council endorses this. Question, will this go back to the Heritage Advisory Commission with those new design elements and hopefully a little bit more guidance as to their ability to comment on, on that structure? And maybe that's a discussion at, or the council table or after, you know, staff to consider, we may not need to have that discussion here, but it's just a thought, I guess, basically for staff to consider.
I see no more comments, that's Counsel Carey.
Yeah, if I can, through the Chair, I'm having an issue with that last sentence, again, as I brought up earlier, and I'd just like to weigh in our professionals here. So through to the Planning Development Services Department, can you weigh in on that last sentence on number two, if that gives enough clear direction? Or if it's too, I don't, I don't even, ambidextrous?
Counselor Carey, I think the midway point is key and the roof is key in this. If the, the last part of the sentence is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, because this is talking about height, it maybe is in keeping with the character of that neighborhood or of the street scape, because it's up on the street scape, I understand that's what Counsel Palmer's.
Through the Chair and if the second is fine, I'm totally fine with just taking that little additional after and is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood out of there. There seems to be some hesitation and that goes back to where, so staff was guiding us. We can, you know, if there's some components in there that we need, you know, considered might be more specific, we can look at that at the council table if there's something that's more concrete, I guess.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I, I view it more as flavor text that kind of explains where the rationale came from and not particularly important. The guideline is in the first word, so it can go where it can stay.
Okay, so we'll just strike that out. Friendly amendment.
See no more comments, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Okay, is there anything else you want to address in this?
Five minutes.
How about times?
Counsel Devlin. Prior, prior to the break, so we can, hopefully everybody can keep it quick, I'd like to put one more resolution forward as a recommendation to council under, and this is under section 7.5 of the Development Procedures Bylaw. Council has optional requirements to require the applicant to conduct additional public consultation, seek additional community engagement regarding proposed application. And so I would like to put forward at this point as a recommendation to be included as we move forward. And I'm going to start with the wording here, that prior to the final council consideration of Heritage Alteration Permit 2024-002, that develop, that development permit 2024-004 at 404 McKenzie Avenue, staff be directed to provide an additional opportunity for residents to submit, to, sorry, to attend a city hosted public information and input session with appropriate notice given to the community, including advertising on the city's website and the city's email newsletter. And that again, will be a recommendation for council to consider as we go forward. There are requirements for notification, but council does have extra discretionary requirements. I think for the four members of the community who are passionate about their neighborhood and the heritage values there, they will, this provides them an opportunity to, to be assured at a future point that they will have a chance to take a look at what's proposed before it comes here. Procedurally, it's a bit tricky because I don't know at what stage that would happen because this goes to council next and then theoretically we go through a process, but I would like that you can consider recommending that to council at this point.
And Counsel Devlin, was that staff driven or is that developer?
This would be staff driven, yes. So this would be staff hosted. Section 7.5 does specify that the cost would be the responsibility of the applicant.
Just a slight point, or all, all second for discussion, we're going.
Sure, yeah.
Second for, yeah, okay, sure.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be city hosted event and that the city would rent the room and invite people down, again, watch through the website and through the email newsletter. And I encourage everyone to sign into the email newsletter, just pitch for that so that people can have a look at a future date. And again, this is a recommendation to council.
And comments around this recommendation? Counsel Palmer?
Yeah, so, yeah, so a second for discussion. I, I, I guess I'm of two minds on that. I definitely absolutely like the philosophy and all that kind of thing. I get concerned about staff resources, that's a pretty, potentially a pretty big event. And also the timeliness, you know, when can we do this or pushed up against Christmas and even in fairness to the developer of, you know, what does this do? And I guess the other thing, I sort of wonder if it's maybe premature, we've already, you know, if this other resolution goes through, then the developer has an opportunity to tell us some creative thing or whatever. And so I wonder if we're jumping the gun on that a little bit. And then the other is we've, we've heard pretty loud and clear that its committees, I think the community has been pretty, they put a lot of effort into providing feedback without us even creating the opportunity, you know, where we can see from the petition itself. I, I'd be fine with resolution, but at the same time, I'm not sure, I just wonder if that's, you know, creating a burden that's not necessary at this point.
Sure, and if I, if I may, if I could ask a question of staff that might prevent the need to do it at this point, theoretically, if this, we go in this direction and that council goes in the direction as proposed, staff will return with a preliminary report at which point council has the opportunity to once again require, or can this time require this under 7.5 of Development Procedures Bylaw, the optional added opportunity for yeah, to the Chair.
Through the Chair, just one comment. Staff would certainly recommend council consider whether or not this is appropriate for it to be a staff driven event if it's related to a private developer application. I certainly have a concern about it blurring the line about what staff's role actually is. Our role is to review the policy and make recommendations as best as we can. And I would worry that this would put staff in a position where we're advocating on behalf of an application, which is not our role. We advocate on behalf of policy that's applicable to make recommendations to council and we work with the community to craft that policy. So if council wants to, you know, consider directing the applicant to host a public information meeting, that's certainly within your purview. I would just really caution about having it be a staff led event. If, if council wants to direct staff as kind of a separate item to have a public engagement event related to heritage conservation overall or broadly, I think that's certainly appropriate. Just also be mindful of, we have DCC engagement happening in January, potentially most likely for rental in February and then potentially recreation amenities in an arena in March. So there's all these public engagement events happening as well that we would have to be mindful of, but a developer led public info meeting, again, that's something that council can direct and just want to be mindful of that, that line between what staff's role is.
And just for clarity, at a later date, theoretically, we will have the opportunity to request that, so that doesn't necessarily need to be done now. We, I would assume that, that there is, will be, regardless of what direction it goes, if it does come back, we do have an opportunity at a later date to specify that, is that correct?
Through the Chair, if council wants the applicant to amend their plans and then go do more public engagement to present the amended plans, it would be most advantageous, I would assume, for the applicant to amend their plans and do that before council consideration. Then council will get the benefit of understanding, being able to attend that event and getting a temperature check of the community as well and how receptive they are to the amended plans. So I would almost advise council that it's probably best to have that as a separate resolution where you direct the applicant prior to, you know, after they've amended their plans or should they amend their plans rather to go and host another public information meeting. I do just want to note though, that in general, public info meetings are, they're typically intended for a land use change and not so much on design where it gets really subjective and there is no land use change contemplated here. That's why when you look through the procedures bylaw, it's really specific to OCP amendments, rezonings and temporary use permits. The applicant did host a public info meeting to raise awareness and inform the community as a voluntary event that they chose to hold, just a piece of information for council to be mindful of too.
I'm happy if it's all right, and thank you to staff for that, to withdraw the motion with the knowledge that at a later time, we will have the opportunity to consider options going forward and how we structure.
I'm good with that. Sounds good. Do you want to take a five minute break?
Ten?
Seven and a half.
Yeah, six, six, six minute break. Ms. Delsoe, we're just going to take a quick recess if you could put something up on the screen. Uh, Ms. Del Gil, we're just gonna take a quick recess if you could put something up on the screen.
So.
How will she mark anything?
Of course she will.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Del Gil, we are ready to go.
We're trying to hold. I'll join you.
I am ready to worship.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll get started. Um, I have to leave this meeting in about ten minutes, so we need to vote in a new person to chair this meeting. Councillor Stacey.
Our lead to nominate councillor Cherry.
Councillor Cherry graciously accepts the nomination, I can tell from his face.
Thanks, uh, for the prepared for this one, appreciate it.
Oh, exactly, we haven't voted on it. Wonder how this vote will go.
Yeah, does anyone else want to nominate anybody else? Uh, all in favor of councillor Cherry, chairing this meeting? There you go.
Thanks.
Maggie, if you want this dumpy chair, kept it warm for you.
Well, you got ten minutes left. Next thought.
Um, we'll dip into nine A zoning bylaw rewrite update. Director Simon.
Through the chair. I know it's already been a long meeting. We have a presentation. I am very happy to answer questions if council just wants to ask questions. But also happy to give the presentation if council seems appropriate.
Councillor Chair.
I give a presentation appropriate to the chair, I'd love to see the picture.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Chair.
Uh, through the chair and all of committee, the whole, thank you for having us here. This is a long time coming, decades in the making now for zoning bylaw to get adopted. That is a modernized bylaw for council to review and consider as we move into the new year. So a little bit of background, roadmap to completing the zoning bylaw, summary of some of the key changes that are included in this major overhaul. And then we will conclude with discussion. So, won't go through this in detail, but just in general, I think council's pretty familiar with what is owning by law is. Regulates use and density, uh, regulates subdivision of land and regulates in specific forms residential rental tenure. How do we ultimately get here? So, we've been doing this comprehensive zoning bylaw rewrite since February twenty twenty three. And it really kicked into gear, into gear in May, February twenty twenty three. So, we had introduction to the project, initial council conversation back in February, completed the whole twenty twenty three. Community survey and a public info meeting. And between May and December, we did targeted stakeholder engagement, looked at building community, chamber of commerce, advisory planning commission. Nonprofits, local subject matter experts. Uh, then over the next few months, we moved into the first key milestone, which was drafting new zones and drafting a new zoning map, which is. Eighty percent of the bylaw in and of itself, huge, huge undertaking. Between March and May, we released these new zones, the new zoning map. We did a whole citywide mail out of about fifty, six hundred letters. I feel very, very bad for our staff that had to stuff them, but they did a great job over the course of three days. So a lot of credit to the support staff. We held fourteen coffee chat sessions with uh, community members ranging from two to three hours in length. We had two hundred and sixty five members show up to participate and provide feedback, so that was excellent. April to May, uh, and a little bit in March too, we were rapidly working to complete the remaining sections of the zoning bylaws. All the supplemental regulations, accessory dwelling units, accessory buildings, home based businesses, all of that good stuff. And then on May twenty eighth, we released the first full version of the draft zoning bylaw and updated draft zoning map based on feedback that we got from the public in March. June to September, so we gave three full months, June, July, August, and we still allowed some feedback to trickle in, in September. And so that was basically the public's opportunity. You got more than three months, take a look at the bylaw, give us written feedback, come in for meetings with staff. We received over eighty written submissions of the draft bylaw. And then between September and October, we reviewed uh, updates to the bylaw based on all the feedback that has been received during the summer months as well. Because it is such a big bylaw, we gave it to legal, gave it, are setting up for internal external agency referral. You know, ministry of transportation needs to sign off on this stuff, so we wanted to make sure everyone had it well in advance. So we also updated based on all the feedback that they had provided. And then finally, on November first, this was the final draft version of the zoning bylaw and zoning map. As well as a whole whack of supporting information to help people understand not only what had changed since May. But also a summary of the, the key findings. So, what are some of the key changes? Density. It's one of the biggest ones, so I think everyone's pretty familiar by now. We've talked about it at length, four units per lot. The way that the bylaw is structured currently, you're gonna have four units on a property, but the development form is very restrictive. It must be a duplex with suites. That is how we accommodate four units per lot. And if council recalls back in May twenty twenty four, when we adopted those zoning changes to comply with the provincial legislation. We adopted them in the least invasive way to meet the legislation. And worked with the community to understand if there's appetite for some more flexibility. Uh, so where we landed on this bylaw is kind of the middle of the road. You can do four units per lot and no more than two buildings. Development form, we're not super picky about, you just can't put those four units in more than two buildings. Give landowners flexibility. Revelstoke's an old town, hundred and twenty five years old now. Very, uh, very diverse development context. Uh, we calculate density in our medium and high density zones using floor area ratio rather than units per hectare. FAR really gets at what's the total square footage you can build on your property, and here's the envelopes that you can build it on. What it really does is it incentivizes a larger quantity of smaller units to be built. Rather than a smaller quantity of larger units. So when you tell someone, and here's a good example of the diagram. You got a lot, your units per hectare, you got a one hectare lot, you can do ten units per hectare, you're allowed to build ten units on there. That developer's gonna build ten units as big and, and expensive and beautiful as they can to maximize their return. When you regulate it by floor area ratio, you're not saying you're capped at this number of units. So it gives flexibility, but also incentivizes them to squeeze more units on there, so long as you're meeting, helping setbacks, building height, landscaping, all that good stuff. Um, but it gets us building housing in a way that. Let's market housing be a bit more affordable is the ultimate goal, rather than just big luxury units being incentivized. Made some changes to mapping, so along Victoria Road. So we did have this conversation with council where there wasn't a huge appetite for pre zoning, but there was a couple of areas that made sense. And we would have discussed this back at April committee, this is a bit of a refresher. So there's some sections of Victoria Road where we have mixed use zoning, the scenic, scenic area commercial. And we just wanted to fill in the gaps there, to make sure that it's all consistent zoning along Victoria Road there. As it is one of our main scenic corridors, also within central Revelstoke, excluding importantly, the heritage area and downtown. We had eighteen narrow lots, so those twenty five foot lots that we periodically see variances for setbacks and lot coverage. We created a really cool new small lot residential zone, so we pre zoned these blank eighteen lots or these vacant eighteen lots. So they can just go right to building permit stage, no variance is needed. They've always been supported in the past and it's a way to support infill in a, in a creative way. And then lastly, we changed some zoning along the, the West Side Road, Highway twenty three north, as well as Big Eddie. To environmental and rural recreation zone to protect sensitive environmental features. So one key change I want to highlight for council that was the biggest change we got back from our legal review. This E one environmental zone that we had developed, when I went through legal. We were dangerously close to creating what's called a public use zone. We, you, council's able to downzone properties, that is, that's established legal precedent. But we can't downzone it to the point that only a public use is permitted. If we do that, then the city is potentially liable for compensation. I don't think the director of finance would be very happy with us if we did that. So we worked with legal to craft the zone as an environmental and rural recreation zone. The uses are still very restrictive, but they are private uses, so campground, outdoor participant rec services are allowed. And within that zone, we included very specific conditions of use to protect those sensitive environmental features. So for example, would say, no development is allowed within X meters of a sensitive environmental feature as determined by a qualified professional. So, not a hundred percent what we were ultimately going for, but we also got to be pragmatic. It is still much, much more protective than what we currently have being the rural residential zones, which allows for heavy industry in these sensitive areas. But that's a very important note for council to be aware of. Uh, we looked at permitted uses, reviewed, combined, removed and added where needed. All permitted uses now have a definition. Some of them didn't have a definition, makes interpretation very, very challenging and inconsistent over the years, so that's cleaned up. And we increased permitted uses in all zones, so childcare, that was a bit of an expedited amendment, that council has already approved, so we'll carry that forward. Community gardens, beekeeping, public art, EV charging and solar generation, those are all permitted in every, every zone right now. We might have historically called them accessory uses, this just adds more clarity so that there's no ambiguity. We updated all the development regulations, so we looked at reducing setbacks within our standard residential areas. Uh, rear yard for typical residential lots went from seven point five meters to five meters. Front yard went from six to four point five meters. Uh, we reduced minimum lot sizes in residential zones from five hundred square meters and five fifty square meters down to four hundred square meters, promoting infill. We increased building heights in medium and high density zones to facilitate four story and six story buildings. Uh, it's important to note, no properties in the city received the high density zone. And we'll talk about that a little bit when we get into the corresponding official community plan amendment that's needed for this project. We also allow greater flexibility for carports, greenhouses, as well as individuals that need to reside within an RV for up to one year. While they're building on a vacant residential lot, which was a clause we didn't currently have in the bylaw, which is pretty common in most municipalities. We have new landscaping provisions for all multi unit residential, commercial and industrial developments. We have updated regulations for accessory. We have updated regulations for accessory buildings, accessory dwelling units and clarification on shipping containers. We updated our home-based business regulations and the community provided some really great feedback for the home-based business regulations, which was excellent to incorporate into the final version of the bylaw that we see today. We did review all of the parking regulations. So there is some incompatibility between different multifamily uses. So apartment buildings historically required one point five spaces per unit and a row house required two or stacked row house required two. We cleaned up the language for dwellings. So now there's only three different types of dwellings, single detached, two-unit, multi-unit. Exactly as it sounds, single detached is one, two-unit is two, multi-unit is three or more principal dwellings. We don't want to get into necessarily the details of the development form to allow some creativity for the community to choose what works best for them on their property. And it also, we we view it as a way for the community to to better mitigate impacts on adjacent properties with these creative designs rather than being so restrictive. We clarified that no visitor accessible parking is required for rowhouse dwellings with individual driveways. Now, that might seem contradictory to what I just said, rowhouse dwellings versus multi-unit dwellings. Though for a rowhouse dwelling, think of it as a multi-unit dwelling with a vertical common wall all the way from the ground up to the roof. So a traditional rowhouse, because we've gone to this one definition of multi-unit dwellings, we've described it based on that vertical common wall that separates them. So a typical rowhouse, the Raven Rowhouses are an example. They would qualify as multi-unit dwelling with that vertical common wall. So usually you have a garage and then you have a parking space, typically how they're built. So you wouldn't be required to have accessible or visitor group parking spaces associated with them. There's no communal parking area. Uh, there's no parking required for an accessory dwelling unit under twenty-nine square meters in size. This also aligns with the Local Government Act where an ADU, that's a micro suite, that's twenty-nine square meters or less. Uh, actually, any suite for that matter, doesn't require DCCs. So it's incentivizing people to build smaller suites within their units. We have new bicycle parking requirements for new development. So this would be both visitor parking as well as permanent bicycle parking. Greater allowance for shared parking for commercial and industrial uses. Updated parking bonus in regulations for developments within three hundred meters of a bus stop and grocery store. We already had that in the bylaw. We've updated it to provide clarity on how we measure that three hundred meters. Right now it's set at five hundred meters. But there's ambiguity. Is it the travel distance? Is it as the crow flies, the radius? So we've clarified that it is as the crow flies, it's the radius. We reduced it to three hundred meters because when we look at five hundred meters, a radius of five hundred meters would have encapsulated just about all of South Side, all of Central Rebel Stoke. It it was too much. So we reduced it to three hundred meters and clarified how we calculated it. And importantly, to used to have to be within proximity of a grocery store, pharmacy and bus stop. We changed it just to be a grocery store and a bus stop. So it allows a bit more flexibility. Uh, we have shared parking for restaurant and tourist combination in downtown and downtown fringe area. Uh, really important at the end of today, you know, if council was not supportive of the prior variant, so we might be worth considering directing staff to make this change before January, specifically as it relates to the C two, which will become the MU two zone. Acts the shared parking requirement for a restaurant. Um, and and I didn't hear any too many concerns about the loading, so maybe that one can stay, but something for council to consider. And then again, no loading requirements for downtown and downtown fringe area. So an OCP amendment staff have been working on this up until today. We have to do an OCP amendment. This gets us aligned with our OCP land use map, map ten right now and the zoning bylaw. Really important, the province is actually forcing us to do this nonetheless. So we're getting a little bit ahead of it. We have to do it before the end of twenty twenty-five. So it's good that we're moving forward. This will impact fifty-eight properties or groups of properties.
Sorry, I have to, uh, bail for a previous commitment and for Cherry will take over chair in the meeting.
Thanks.
Oh, you're welcome.
Through the chair, I will continue at your leisure. So this OCP amendment will impact fifty-eight properties or groups of properties. When we say groups of properties, we're looking at over a hundred individual titled lots. But we have a bunch of properties, especially when we start getting into the environmental zoning on West Side Road. There's no legal title. It might be crown land. So it's really difficult to actually give a legal description associated with it. Um, but you know, you can also think about, we have parcels that hundreds of parcels along Centennial Park that are technically legal lots. So those are what we're saying when we say group of properties. What does this look like? We got five areas that are going to industrial. So right now they might be sand and gravel. It's more of an industrial storage use. Makes more sense for them to be industrial. Two areas going to commercial to reflect the existing use on site. So a good example is the base camp development on Highway twenty-three North. It's a hotel. Right now their land use doesn't reflect that. So again, this is cleaning things up a little bit. Uh, twelve areas to environmental or portion to environmental to reflect sensitivities and be consistent with that E-one zoning. Six going to mixed use to reflect the existing use on site and proposed zoning. If we have this in the Big Eddy, we also have it in, um, along Highway twenty-three North on the east side of it. And then we have ten going to low density to reflect the existing use on site. And twenty going to medium density from the high-density land use designation in the OCP. So these low and medium density ones, it's really important for council to to understand why we're doing this. We're not trying to take away any rights, but when we did the OCP in twenty twenty-two, we updated how those are defined. So an example is we had properties right near the Thunderbird and Bankman in Columbia Park that were designated medium density because they had duplexes on them. We've changed the zoning bylaw. We've changed the OCP. We have this new mandated, uh, up to density, four units density requirement from the province. It makes sense for them to be low density now to get compliant with the OCP. So that's an example of why we've changed some of the stuff to give a better reflection of the existing use on site and the capability of these properties to to accommodate increased density in the future. Now, the high-density ones, really important note here, there's only one property in the city that will have the high dense, uh, high-density land use designation should this mapping amendment be approved. And that's a property that's CD zone along the highway. Now, why have we taken out a lot of the high-density land use designations in the OCP? They were applied historically to properties that there wasn't a lot of thought given to it. And there was also this concept that it was applied to every property that had an apartment building on it. And staff's concern is that, especially with the changes from the province that were restricted from holding public hearings. One of these old apartment buildings or maybe a smaller lot that had a high-density designation, they demoed the buildings and all of a sudden there's a six-story building that's on there and the community is like, this was rezoned without a public hearing, no major notification, no major opportunity for us to provide input. That isn't what we envisioned for this area. So by doing this, we're not saying no to that. We're just saying the process will be a little bit more all-encompassing, an OCP amendment, rezoning. Anyone who wants to build a six-story building that isn't in a CD zone right now, that's what this would achieve. Not saying no, it's just a matter of you have to go through the public hearing process, kind of giving council and the community a better opportunity to control those types of developments and where we see them in the city. So with the proposals, oh, I already went over that. So is there, just before I I kind of get on to next steps and some summary, this is a big one. So we've been talking about it now since last April. Is there any immediate questions on that or anything that requires some more clarification on what we're trying to achieve here? Because it is, it is a bigger one. We're talking OCP changes. Or does it all make sense?
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud, perfect.
No, I'll, I'll save my comments until later.
I will continue. Uh, so just some general engagement stats of where we're at in the process. We've had eight hundred and technically qualified active participants. So they've attended meetings or watched them online, filled out surveys, provided written feedback, attended coffee chats, served on a commission, subject matter experts, et cetera. Had at least thirty-five hundred, uh, thirty-five hundred individuals at least viewed information on Talk Rebel Stoke, and that's actually up now as well. So we'll have a a full engagement summary for council in January. That really breaks all this down. I had fifty-six hundred letters sent to all landlords in the community, ten separate stakeholder groups engaged on the project, ten general project updates via email to inform the community, three mayor videos, two public info meetings, fourteen coffee chat sessions. This is our third committee of the whole meeting. And everything said and done since March, we've had twenty-three direct changes made to the bylaw based on public feedback.
Uh, question on that slide, Chair.
All right.
Um, yeah, just on the, uh, Talk Rebel Stokes, you have that approximately three thousand five hundred. Is that views as opposed to individuals or would we actually be able to identify individuals?
Uh, it would be, my understanding of how Bang the Table compiles it all is that it is individuals like unique IP addresses. So it would be unique page visits. And they at least viewed some information on the website. Might have just read the first page, might have opened a document, but they at least viewed something on there.
So through the chair then, so like, I've been on there a few times. I'm just.
You should be counted as one.
One.
Unless you, I would imagine if you were looking at it though on your phone versus your computer, that might count as two.
Right. Good, thank you.
So next steps, we're anticipating an early twenty twenty-five date for initial council consideration. So notwithstanding any huge red flags that committee would present today to staff. Uh, we are targeting, working rapidly to bring this to council for January fourteenth, being the first meeting of the year. Um, we will be recommending council start a little, go slow with this. We'll probably just see a recommendation for first reading and then direction for a public hearing. We want to make sure that everyone's aware of this bylaw coming forward and that they have that opportunity to present feedback to council. Council can then direct staff to make any changes that they deem appropriate. And you know, councils have this this draft bylaw since, you know, end of May now. So we really encourage you guys to, you know, if there's changes that you want to see in there, once we get through the public hearing or even in advance, um, give that direction to staff. If you think the heights are too high, lock coverage is too high. You know, we're really happy with the format of this document, but the specific nitty-gritty content, that's where we want to hear feedback from council to to really make this your own. Um, and then happy to have any discussion and answer any questions that council may have on this project. Long time coming.
Thank you for that. Appreciate all the work you guys have come into this. It's a huge undertaking, especially the document. It's over forty years old. Uh, I want to open it up the floor to anybody who has any questions. That's a statement.
If I may, through the chair to, uh, Director Simon. One of the concerns that I've been hearing through the business community is the lack of availability of commercial space, not only commercial space, but also industrial space. How does this, uh, rewrite address those two issues?
Certainly, uh, through the chair, council statement, really good question. And there's a couple of pieces here. So when we did the OCP, the OCP did a, an inventory of all of our commercial industrial land to look at utilization. Found a lot of it was underutilized and says you have enough land in your OCP designated industrial and commercial to support what you need. But whether or not it's built, that's an entirely different side of the coin. So this bylaw, and you know, you can always think the zoning bylaw is kind of the baseline for what you can do on your property and how much of it you can do. It's trying to create some more flexibility for commercial and industrial. So an example on the commercial side is we've in, we've improved home-based business regulations, created some more flexibility, clarified you can have multiple base businesses on one particular lot with some restrictions. That they would be. And as well in our medium and high-density zones, we allow for some commercial, even though they're not a mixed-use zone. We allow for some small store, commercial offices, personal, uh, personal service establishments and local convenience store. As long as it doesn't take out more than five percent of the the area of the building. So trying to get some flexibility within our zones to incorporate those uses. Um, but it does become tricky. We've updated all the uses in our industrial zones so that they're they're more compatible with each other and that it's really clear distinction between the low-impact zone, medium-impact and high-impact zone that they build off of each other. And so there, there's a lot of cleanup that's been done and then some additional flexibility that's been incorporated into the bylaw. But in terms of changing zoning of land that may be residential or a different zone right now to commercial or industrial, we haven't done that. And and that's where we'd be taking our lead from that official community plan land use strategy. And that, that's a I think that's a bigger conversation if we need to zone more land. The data we have doesn't necessarily show that. It's just the land we have is built onto its foundation.
Great. Thank you for that. I know, not not just something you appreciate that.
Anybody else?
Sure. So through the chair, uh, thank, thank you very, very much.
Absolutely, uh, through the chair, astounding, really astounding the amount of work that's gone in, the professionalism. This is by far the best zoning kind of rewrite exercise I've seen in my thirty-five years in local government. Better than having a consultant come in. Well, well done. Yeah, thank you to you and your staff and everybody that's worked there. It's pretty amazing, really. The detail that you've gone through, um, I I don't know of any other candidate would have a planner that would have attempted to do this in-house. So thank you very much. Um, yeah, I guess the the question is, so we all feel pretty good overall. There's maybe parking issues or something that are top of mind right now, but um, notwithstanding that, we feel really good. It's gone through a really good process, a lot of public feedback and thank you to the public, uh, for that amazing community that we live in. Um, unintended consequences, there's always something we didn't think of. Um, and so if we see something that, if something happens that we didn't anticipate it, and then you know, that future time, somebody says, well, why didn't you, you just, why didn't you do that? Uh, so for example, say, uh, South Side Grocery decides to fold up and become a high-rise apartment, and you no longer have that criteria for the parking thing. I I'm not asking for an answer to that particular scenario, but just in general, those unintended things and how to, how to it, that we can't actually even see at this point, how do we deal with those in the future?
Through the chair, very good question. And, uh, should I say, our team and in the whole team, the city really appreciates, uh, the positive feedback. Um, the team and development services and the broader team has done a really great job throughout this project. It's been a lot of support from various departments. Um, so it takes a lot to do this in-house. We really do appreciate that. As for unintended consequences, bylaws are always gonna, always gonna happen. The key here is that we don't let this linger on so long to this point. We need to make sure that we're in constant monitoring, evaluation, housekeeping amendments every single year or every two years to clean up the bylaw so that we're managing those unintended consequences. And when those unintended consequences do come up, we have to start addressing them with targeted solutions and targeted zoning bylaw amendments. Like, this level of an overhaul should never have to occur because it hasn't occurred for this long. It should always be more manageable changes that the community and council and staff can can tolerate rather than these huge omnibus overhaul at the same time. So I think that those unintended consequences won't be as large now. And I will say too, I give staff so much credit. We locked all the planners and planning techs up for four days, five days in this room, going through this whole bylaw line by line, poking holes in it. And that's why that summer period was so critical for that internal testing. So we're hoping any big unintended consequences have been mitigated. And one example of how we've done that, we didn't receive any feedback from the public on building heights associated with this bylaw. But as staff were reviewing at the building heights in the medium and high-density zones that were presented in May, we all went through it. We thought that it was too high and one of the unintended consequences was trying to regulate medium-density zones to be a four-story building. The height was fifteen meters. Someone might be able to squeeze five stories in there. And we're going to Mr. Gips, who's really well-versed in this stuff from a building code perspective, so we reduced it down to thirteen and a half meters. So like, the staff have gone through with that lens. Because this, uh, and I will say overall, this bylaw takes very much a middle-of-the-road approach. Parking, we didn't say to Axel parking apartments, let the market sort it out. Building height, we didn't say, let's go up to six stories in our medium-density zones, right? Like, it's a really middle-of-the-road approach. And we're doing that to minimize those unintended consequences. We're hoping they're not there. But if they are there, constant evaluation, constant amendments to the bylaw. It's a living document. It has to be treated that way.
Council Devon.
Yeah, well, um, this is going to sound kind of like a joke question, just because you know me, it isn't. We don't make national news very often. Where did we land on beekeeping? I know it's such a, it's a small thing, but it's, it was important.
Uh, through the chair. So that was, uh, that was very interesting. And we were very happy to work with the little beekeeping community. So we had five staff that went and toured several facilities in the community with some of the local experts. And then we invited those local experts. We had two, two of the main ones actually come in. And we sat down in the, in the planning meeting room and we workshop the regulations with them. We literally threw them up on the screen, went through, we, we, staff kind of said, here's what we think the changes are needed based on the forty-four letters we received. They went through, they're like, well, what about this? What about this scenario? And we got down to nitty-gritty of what about someone who wants to keep a balcony or keep a beehive on a balcony in a multi-unit building? Like, we, we really dialed it in. And so the beekeeping community seems to be quite happy with the changes that have been made. Uh, but it's a really good example. And I know you've heard me talk a lot tonight, but I'll throw this plug out every single time. When the community participates when we're crafting policy, that is the time that they can influence it. It's so hard when they see an application on the backend to try and influence it at that stage, and then they can't sort of grapple with that at the last item, right? So we always encourage people to participate when we're crafting the policy. That is where you have the most power as community members. And that's a really good example of it.
Any other counselors have any comments for the floor? Uh, Council State.
Uh, yes. Thank you. Through the chair to Director Simon. Looking here through the, uh, zoning byline. Looking here through the zoning byline, I'm looking at here zoning for multi family development, specifically M D twos and M D threes. Um, so obviously there's no shortage of a housing crisis, but one of the stipulations that I'm seeing in here. Is that fifteen percent of the units in those two zones need to be three bedrooms. Having just heard from. Uh, from the Raven Townhouse Development that they are having a little bit of a. Surprise in selling those three bedroom townhouses that they just developed. What I'm wondering is, are we putting more barriers in place to develop a more. Rental specific units with a three bedroom criteria? Um, and I just wanted to hear your comments on that.
Uh, through the chair, councillor Staker, this is a very good question and to be fully honest, the, the answer is potentially, right? No one has a, a crystal ball. We can't say for sure, but the intent of this regulation is. We have concerns when we looked at other jurisdictions, if we're not requiring new multi unit buildings to have family units in there. It starts to erode the fabric of some of these communities. Mississauga is a really good example and they're having to work backwards now. Where new developments, they're up to twenty five percent of the minimum has to be three bedroom or greater. Because they noticed people are only building bachelor's one bedroom and maximum two bedroom. It's how, and especially as we're shifting to a floor area ratio method of calculation. People are going to be incentivized to squeeze as many units as we can. We have to make sure we still have family units within these multi unit buildings so that there's affordable. Market housing for people that have families with kids and, and one of the key things, and this is where again, we're, we're super pleased with this bylaw and what it's gotten to. But it's a living document. If we see variances come forward for this left, right and center. Then we're going to know that we're kind of missing the mark and it needs to be reevaluated a little bit. With that said, you know, as we're going through the process of council wanting to direct changes. This is a really good example of council might say, let's start lower and go slow and maybe five percent or ten percent units, right? So definitely a consideration as we go forward and something that we'll be paying a close mind to if, uh, changes are needed.
If I may, just through the chair, um, it's been my experience, I mean, the most demand units. Um, that I've seen in the market have been one and two bedrooms and two bedrooms can be maybe a little bit harder. Um, three bedrooms, I think, you know, like, yes, there's definitely a need for, 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 for families and for. Um, for those units. My question, when we're looking at Mississauga, if we're using that as an example. Were they seeing the same level of development in regards to townhouses when they had this? You know, ha- having to backtrack now and having to have, you know, needing more three bedroom units. Were they seeing the same amount of development for townhouses as we are? I'm not really too sure. I'm not too familiar with Mississauga, so.
Yeah, through, through the chair, councillor Staker, just again, one example. Um, wouldn't know specifically how many, how many townhomes that they're building, and that is a good point because we are seeing a lot of that missing middle come in here. One of the things that happens when we only build one and two bedroom units. And it's really interesting because I've been watching some videos and reading some articles on this lately. It really incentivizes units to be constructed for investors. Rather than families that are looking to purchase and, and get into the market. Cause an investor wants a small unit that's easy to manage, that's kind of turnkey. A family is looking for something that they can grow into a little bit more. So we have to be really mindful of, and, and the, the market has shifted. You look in some of the bigger cities that I know were not a big city, but they're the ones that get the most out of this, like Toronto. A lot of their condo developments aren't selling right now and one of the things they're finding is. They're building units for investors. They're not building them for the end user and those families that are actually in demand. So we, we're kind of having the situation where the match of. People that are demanding that housing to the housing that's being built, it's, it's not quite compatible. So this is a way that we're hoping gets it a little bit more compatible for Revelstoke and also makes it so that. Families that are currently living here that are in the rental market, looking to get into the, the market to, to purchase something. That those units are available for.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Anyone have any further questions? Anybody else? Councillor Leno.
Uh, yeah, um, yeah, just a general comment. It's great to see this done. I remember in twenty eighteen when I decided not to run for council again. Uh, uh, staff invite everyone to hand a little message and mine was. Finish the O C P, get the zoning bylaw done, you know, uh, because I've been here, um. Uh, for many years coming to this room in various capacities, we've been through the I S, I C S P, meant through the U D B that collapsed. Uh, been through, uh, what I felt was, um, uh, uh, uh. A missed opportunity to invest in, uh, getting these, uh, this, uh, framework in place because. Money hates mystery and you're not going to come build housing if you know there's going to be a huge, long process. And I think in, you know, in the, uh, in the meantime, uh, actual federal, more provincial legislation has, you know, come to this realization of things that were. People were saying a long time, uh, 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 you know, we were trying to advocate for a long time ago here. I remember sitting down with the mayor, uh, of the time back in like twenty ten, the density, uh, uh. Uh, exercise with some grad students from U, planning grad students from U V C. And so I guess in summary, it's been a long, uh, long road and it's great to see it's, uh, the, our old. You know, as everyone knows or should know, or hopefully knows now, and, and this is more public focused sort of statements is that. Um, our old, um, bylaws, uh, were very, very old and just did not work for a lot of things, did not match the times, so we're, we're getting there. Um, I guess the main message I wanted to forward is what, you know, um, I, I, uh. I like the statement, uh, from, um, uh, Director Simon that. Uh, we should go slowly in the new year and keep going, cause I think that at one point, maybe there's a little bit more focus. Uh, on exactly that we're, we're nearing the endpoint in this now or never to, to get your comment in there. And it's sort of following up, uh, uh, in the neighborhood of, uh, councillor Palmer's content, our comment, uh. That, you know, there's those unintended consequences, those, those last, last look, or it might be, for example, uh, similar to what councillor Devlin was mentioning with the. With the bees, you know, when it comes down to something specific, you know, like it's not a theoretical. You know, whatever, however, many page document full of technical information, people go, oh, what about this thing? What about that? So I really like to drive those conversations as much as possible. Uh, uh, continuing to do that so that, um, you know, uh, now that we're really close to the final product. People can have those last say on those things and I'm really looking forward to getting this done. I think, um, um, it, uh, will, uh, you know, one of the, one of the sources, one of the genesis of. Challenges for councils over the years here, within the ones that I've been part of. Uh, has been, uh, exactly that lack of clarity that comes from our foundational documents and it just ends up being a huge, long. Uh, schmoo is trying to do everything and, and hopefully we can, uh, in the new year get this done. And this has definitely been a major objective, uh, for me, uh, and I think everyone on council, it's great to see we're at this. And last word, just for, for members of the public, is we're getting close, so. Uh, now, now or never in terms of like having a look through, taking a look what's happening in your neighborhood. Asking some questions, following through. I know lots of people taking the opportunity to do so, but now is the time to, uh, to. Uh, you know, have that last look if you haven't yet and see where we're going to go. So thank you very much for all the hard work the staff have been doing. It's been, uh, great to work through this process and I'm looking forward to, uh, wrapping this up in the.
Good stuff. I appreciate that. Um, I do have a few questions and some clarification and potentially a, uh, bit of direction coming your way, uh, Director Simon. Let's start with some low hanging fruit, uh, in regards to home based businesses. If you'd like, I can tell you the page number. Fifty, fifty nine. Uh. I've been working with a lot of entrepreneurs in town and I, they are. They enjoy a lot of these changes. There's a question that's been proposed is. Who qualifies whether it's a type one or a type two business? Is that going to be the applicant or the city?
To the chair. It would be based on what type of business they're doing and how it fits within the regulations. So an example, if their business, think of a type one as something that you wouldn't even know it's there if you just walked by. An accountant that's operating an office out of their basement, no one thinks about it. Type two, think about it as something that's a little bit more invasive. But that there's going to be mitigative measures. You have a landscaping business, you gotta store some of that equipment onsite. Okay, you're allowed to, but there's restrictions on how much of the, the lot can be used to store that equipment. And it needs to be adequately screened. So it's really dependent on the nature of the business. And this might take some time and we're going to have to update our business license application forms, but we want to get to the point that people would be filling out a form and selecting type one or type two. Then we'd be reviewing, might say, hey, you're actually a type two, you're not a type one, so we're going to lock it as that. Cause you're only, you're permitted two of them, but you're only allowed to have one type one and one type two, so that we don't get, we have to maintain it as a residential area still.
That's great. That, uh, that clears up some of the, uh, some of the questions at the beginning. Uh, another question is, uh, that I've seen is from the department and, uh, construction side of things. Uh, horizontal subdivisions, are they allowed in low residential? Low density residential?
Uh, to the chair, yes, if they're stratifying it, which is what they would have to do with the horizontal, uh, stratification. They would be permitted to do that. And this is one of the beauties of the ways we've defined dwelling. Go, like you literally go through it, single detached, one principal dwelling unit, two unit, two principal dwelling units, multi unit, three principal dwelling units. Giving a lot of flexibility and then the next thing that we're all going to have the fun time doing is. Updating Form and Character Development Permanent Area Guidelines, so that if we want to control how things look. And we can do that through an appropriate development permit. So they are permitted to do that. A lot of flexibility for the multi units, as long as they're not putting in more than two buildings, we don't care.
Thanks for that. Um, I've got two more for you. One is in regard to the four units. Um, as we're in a housing crisis. I really want council and the community to. To consider allowing more. Um, depending on the size of the lot, um, specifically for. C M H C funding, which could fast track some developments, some residential development. Um, I know that this has already gone for, we've had a lot of public feedback, but I do think that's something that the community in this table needs to consider. Um, wondering if you have any thoughts on that? For example, for funding, you need five doors. To get certain types of grants or money availability, including thirty year amortization at low rates.
To the chair, the recommendation from the planning group will be, we've, there's been so much. Work done over the last few years, all the master plans on the engineering side, like. The whole stuff, like the O C P housing action plan, all these foundational items. I think that where we're getting to is that we have this solid baseline. Now we can really start doing some cool targeted specific projects. Council wants to consider as a future project, pre zoning certain areas. Looking at our scenic corridor, we got Townley Street, we got Fourth Street, you guys are doing the, uh, the Fourth Street Common Project, like. We're getting all these pieces in place so that we can start to get a little bit more focused on what makes sense and where. Which I think will result in better community engagement too, where it's a more manageable topic. So we recommend, you know, this is already a big change and we're promoting some flexibility in how that change is being considered. It might be best to kind of wait and see how this is ultimately implemented and adopted and the challenges that it poses and the opportunities it creates. Before we think about taking it to the next step. And we also got to consider as well, the minute that our transit service hits fifteen minute stops. We have to eliminate parking requirements and allow up to six units per lot for all residentially zoned properties within four hundred meters of that transit stop. And Mr. Black and his team keep making transit so good in this city, then we're probably going to hit that at some point. So there already is a little bit of a precursor that we need to think about for those minimum density allowances.
Okay, I appreciate that feedback. Uh, my last one is very specific. I believe Mr. Gibbs has the page number. Uh, it's in regards to, uh, minimal. I think the term would be minimal frontage for subdivision. We have it set at forty five, sorry, fourteen meters, which is forty five feet. Um. When we talk about flexibility. Um, I think we missed the mark on this one. I was hoping you could talk a bit more about why this number was chosen. Uh, it's my understanding it's to eliminate panhandle lots in subdivisions, which I understand. But I do want to push back on this one afterwards.
Uh, to the chair, that is totally fair and again, this is reflective of staff's kind of middle of the road approach. Understanding that when we've tried so hard to get the community to really engage in this project. We hit like, and again, this is including people that just watched the video. We hit like eight, eight and a half percent of the community overall, which by some standards is really good for local government in general. It's not the level of feedback that you want, so we wanted to hit this middle of the road approach so that the community doesn't start to see things that they wouldn't necessarily anticipate. And if we go really, really low, you're going to struggle because we've, these numbers. They, they actually came from an exercise that we did at, that looked at. Reducing minimum lot size to four hundred square meters, what do you need in order for minimum lot frontage to still be able to meet minimum setbacks? To have a reasonable width dwelling to accommodate one, two, three, four units on your property. So we also got to think about that. We've reduced the minimum lot width from fifteen to fourteen meters while simultaneously increasing density. So it's already going to be a struggle to meet some of that density, mostly on some of these lots. And if we go down any further, it might be more of a struggle. And again, I appreciate that this is a minimum, but this is excellent feedback and this is exactly the types of changes that staff are hoping, you know, council can consider debate and provide direction on. As we move through this process and if council says we want to be more aggressive with infill development. You will see staff getting behind that and supporting it all day long.
Maybe just a, a, a quick question on that supportive development. I know in our. Housing action plan, it mentioned, uh, three ways of supporting housing development in our community. The expediting the process, the letters of support and waving D C Cs. I know traditionally those have gone towards nonprofits. But is that something like, if, if we're going to push medium density? And I think in order to, to really make a dent in the housing crisis that we're seeing locally and, and nationwide. We really need to get a little bit more aggressive about how we're pursuing other options besides just relying on nonprofits. A great example is, is B C Housing. I know they're coming to the table with, with the development on Fourth Street. Ten years later. So i- 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 is the city going to be more proactive in, in pursuing other, other ventures or, or what's? What's the direction that we're going to take?
Um, through the chair, uh, councillor Staker, staff have been actively working with our partners and looking at options with. Potential government to expedite housing construction, to see more housing construction coming to the city. I do just want to say, cause I know sometimes you guys are seeing these applications one at a time. And we're trying to be better at collecting stats and bringing them for council and the community to digest, but just so that you're aware. Developments that are in the hopper right now through various stages kind of might be a development permit or getting close to occupancy. We got, we were just pulling these numbers the other day. We got six hundred and fifteen units that are at some stage of the approval process that are non-market or purpose built rental. And that doesn't include anything that we might be looking at doing on the Oscar Street lands based on the master plan you guys approved this year. We got about two hundred and ninety five units, I believe, that are approved as multi unit short term rental. Which is Mackenzie Village Next Phases and then the Capit Residences. And we got about another two hundred and thirty units that are multi unit missing middle market housing that are at various stages of the approval process. The Raven Town Homes, Hemlock, et cetera, those types of developments. So when you add all that together, we're at, you know, we're eleven hundred units that are at some stage of the approval process that will probably come online over the next three to five years. So we're seeing a lot of development and when it comes to other ways to incentivize it, this bylaw is a great start. You know, the D C C bylaws currently being worked on, we all know the rates have to go up to accommodate the infrastructure event that we need. Um, the legislation is pretty clear. You can offer a paper, but it has to be for nonprofit housing. But you know, as that project comes up with Mr. Black and his team, I'm sure there will be some great conversations about how to still. You know, incentivize the housing that we want to see and disincentivize the housing that maybe is. I think in the past, the, the big lot, single family development, right? Which the bylaw itself is already structured to do that. You got a big lot, you gotta pay more. Multi family, you pay less per unit, right? So really interesting conversations, always a trade off, always a compromise and. You know, the more incentives we put out there, the, there's something that's falling off the table.
I certainly have, you know, I may through the chat, I certainly understand where you're coming from. What I'm seeing though is, is with the developments that you mentioned. You know, are, are these going to be specifically rental? You know, the problem, and if we look at the nonprofit sector, it's part of the problem that we're hitting is that there's. Salary caps to be eligible to, to, to obtain that housing. And what we're seeing is that, you know, maybe the Raven Town Homes are too expensive for, you know, the new single family to, to, to purchase. It's probably going to be too, too expensive for them to buy, um, or, or rent or buy. And then there's also, there, there's a lot of, of specifically like purpose built rentals in our community.
We're through the chair to councillor Staker, a lot of the projects right now are utilizing C M H C funding. And we want to keep building off of this and especially when we start to look at development in Oscar, which we're planning to have future conversations with council in, uh, a year ago. Uh, being a lot of those C M H C projects, it's like twenty percent of the rent needs to be provided at twenty percent, uh, below the median income in the city. Or what would be a, an affordable average monthly rent. And then the other eighty percent can kind of be at roughly market value or a bit below market value to compensate. And then there's no income restrictions on that, uh, on that development. So we are looking creatively, because we understand Revelstoke does actually have a pretty high median income. So it can be, can be challenging to get the right people in the units. Um, so we're looking specifically on the Oscar Street lands that we can have more flexibility and we're in particular looking at. How do we get right at first refusal for those key players in the community from the, you know, the much sector, the government? Um, hot healthcare, schools, et cetera. Um, even looking at like E C Es, you know, Met Tex, like how do we make sure that we still have people in this community that are providing the amenities that? This community relies upon and that it's not just investment housing that's coming into the city.
Sure.
It's a tough, it's a tough thing to sort, you know?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate your response. Absolutely, thank you so much, appreciate your response.
I'll just open this back up to the floor again, make recommendations. Counselor Barron.
Uh, thank you, through the chair, uh, just on the unit numbers, so you have around eleven hundred in the hopper right now. Do, do you, do you know or magnitude, uh, the number of housing units we have in total in Rebelstoke?
We are at, uh, currently right now, when we look at the twenty twenty-one census, have been added the units that have gotten occupancy, we're at, I believe, about three thousand nine hundred and fifteen, somewhere there, maybe thirty-nine seventeen. We, we literally were just looking at this the other day.
Three thousand nine hundred and four thousand.
Yeah, so about eight, about, I think seven point two percent of the units that currently exist are, are non-market housing. And once all the other non-market purpose-built rental comes online, we're going to be at about seventeen, seventeen and a half percent. So quite excellent numbers, like, you know, one or five units being non-market or purpose-built rental is huge for this community.
And uh, through the chair, um, Fourth Street Development, is that included?
Yes.
Uh, eleven hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, interesting, um, just, you know, sort of thinking about what the future looks like unintended consequences, like where everybody in the entire country starts tripping over themselves for accelerating housing. And it's accelerating, there's a lot of activity out there, if you drive around, it's quite amazing. Um, so when we look at that increase, twenty percent increase of uh, housing in the next few years, that's a massive uh, increase. So, and we heard that from the developers as well, not, units aren't selling even at this point. So what does that look like? And especially if there's a downturn in the economy, we could very well be saying, oh, we incentivized too much, too fast. And um, it's kind of reminiscent of the federal government with uh, immigration dramatically put it up and said, woo, we went a little bit too fast there and created more housing problems for ourselves. Um, uh, uh, just uh, and maybe you're going to capture this, the chairman, the um, uh, on a potential resolution, but the, the next steps uh, is, it's here and goes to council, potentially first reading, public hearing, uh, so the planner talked about um, uh, you know, getting in before it's all done. So there is this another opportunity, and if we, we as council or staff hear things of substance, there's still an opportunity for more tweaking, but we're getting closer and closer. Uh, my final uh, comment, um, uh, again, you know, it's just an amazing job you did do. I failed to mention just how well you pivoted with the provincial, so midstream, big massive changes in the province, other communities are scrambling to do that, and you guys pivoted so fast on the, that density thing. And of course, we had already had some sort of direction that we're going down, that was a little bit faster than we anticipated. Um, just thinking ahead, and we haven't done this for years on pursuing awards. I, I think this is award-winning, and uh, you know, so the uh, maybe even the chamber has something in on, you know, how communities can collaborate, so award, something for the C A O to say, let's, let's, you know, get our communications person to snoop around, because I, I think this is award-winning, not just in the province, but in the country. Thanks.
Great feedback, I appreciate that. I'm curious if anybody has any recommendations before I put one forward. All right, uh, if seconded, I'd like to recommend that staff reexamine the minimum frontage for new subdivisions, and if I get a second there, I'll speak to it. Thanks, Devlin. Um, both for the minimum subdivision size of, of four hundred meters, as well as anybody that wants to go over that size. Uh, I do feel that ah, developers and private industry should be the ones that are coming up with inclusive and uh, cool new ways to meet their requirements, and I don't want to see uh, this bylaw further restrict housing developments in town, and that's why I'm putting it forward. Uh, I understand that it went from fifty feet to forty-five, or fifteen meters to fourteen, um, but I would like this reexamined first. Feel free.
Just to clarify, examining it specifically just for the, the R L D one zone?
Correct.
And um, if you want us to examine it to lower it further?
Yes. Uh, so just, yeah, it's interesting, um, so the, just for clarification, so
the proposed zoning is going from fifteen to fourteen meters frontage? And the area, can you just repeat what the area change is?
So we, we amalgamated four of the existing low-density zones, R one, R one A, R two, R two A, and they vary between five hundred and fifty square meters and four hundred square meters of a minimum lot size. And so we landed on the lower end of four hundred square meters just for consistency. So this is the new base zone that would apply to all residential properties that are currently R one, R one A, R two, R two A.
So through the chair, I, I think I can support that motion, uh, because it's, take a look at it. I wouldn't want it to become a huge exercise for staff, although I think they thought about it a little lot. So I kind of envisioned saying, okay, this is what we were, here's what we're proposing, here's even a further, you know, more flexibility and kind of pros and cons, just a kind of chart. So if it was that kind of level, not a, don't go back to the community and get more feedback, but more just a paper exercise, I, I think that would be good.
No, I appreciate that, uh. In addition to this, I can say anecdotally that I'd take a look at catalogs of duplexes and duplexes with suites that are accompanied on smaller frontage lots that are deeper, we have a number of deep lots in this town. Um, so I don't want to further restrict uh, design elements, which is why I'd like us to reexamine this. Is there any other comments? Counselor Barron? I was just going to say, yeah, I have no idea what any of this means. Well, this is uh, sounds good to me, or bad? Counselor Statevers.
If my understanding is correct, essentially, you know, this is removing one more barrier and potentially increasing the available um, density for, 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 for a lot, right? So uh, so in this, and then may, maybe through, through the chair to Director Simon, um, we've heard a lot about every single lot now being allowed to build four units, but my initial understanding was that it was three or four, depending on the size of the lot. Is that not still the case, or is that now changed to, to four is the new minimum?
Through the chair, that is correct, so two hundred and eighty square meter lot size is the cutoff. If you're less than that, three lots maximum, or three units maximum, if you're over that, it's four. And um, to the chair, if it's uh, something that council would appreciate, when we bring this forward on January fourteenth, we could do up some, some diagrams as to what this kind of looks like if we reduce it from fourteen to twelve, because if we reduce that, then we got to reduce the, the party wall from seven meters to six meters. And, and so it has this, this trickle effect. Um, but then we can give council the information, and then when you're considering the bylaw, you could consider if that's one change you want to recommend right away, or if you want just the information, and then you can direct a whole whack of changes after the public hearing if so desired.
Would you need that formally, or can I just say that would be a perfect exercise to walk us through?
Uh, through the chair, we're, formally is, is helpful, um, because then we remember, since we have a month between now and then.
Can I just confirm that the, the motion on the table is that staff reexamine the requirements for minimum, minimum frontage in the R L D one zone?
For new subdivisions.
For new subdivisions.
Counselor Leno?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, a question of, uh, for uh, Director Simon. I guess, um, as we're in the home stretch here and looking to bring forward first reading in the new year, um, I'd appreciate any suggestions in how we can go, we best go through final changes and revisions in an orderly fashion. What would you recommend? Uh, we have uh, one here, people talk about other ones, the, other ones might come forward, uh, et cetera. What would you recommend is a good process for, for making sure we don't sort of uh, lose track of what we're doing right now?
Um, through the chair, to Counsel Orlando, staff would certainly recommend that if any changes are directed, the most efficient way would be to direct those changes after the public hearing, because you might hear from a large segment of the community that says, this is going to promote too much infill, it's too much of a change within our neighborhood, and you guys might want to reconsider reducing some of these requirements. So I think that if we have it all at once, so that we're not making a change kind of preemptively, and then we go through the public hearing process, which results in changes to kind of walk back some of those earlier ones. So staff are more than happy, we can, we can kind of do up what it would look like to reduce some of these minimum lot width requirements. And then, but if council's going to direct formal changes to the bylaw, it would be most efficient if we went through those changes one by one, council passes a resolution for each one of those changes, and we do that after the public hearing, so that staff can go back, make all the tweaks and changes, because there's so many pieces in this bylaw that are interconnected. And so we want to make sure that we're reviewing it all methodically and comprehensively to account for all the changes that council wants to see.
Thank you. Jim Ball? Uh, to build off that, uh, Director Simon, uh, I think it'd be uh, a useful exercise to have this in front of us prior to going to and going to a public hearing. Um, for example, the minimum frontage, could you read back again what you'd like? That you mentioned would help formally?
But to, to the chair, the, the resolution is, I think it's fine, we, we understand the gist of it, just making sure that um, I guess, as, as long as you're not directing any changes right now, which again, council could certainly direct changes, but you'd be making a recommendation right now to council that would be considering it on the fourteenth, when we're trying to bring this forward for the fourteenth, so the timing might also be a little bit challenging, but I, I, I think as long as Ms. Floyd or Professor is okay with it, I, I get the gist of it, I can include it in a presentation so that council can take in the information when they're initially considering it, and then can also take in any other information or anything else you guys want to consider that might result in changes once we get through the public hearing process or before council takes it appropriate.
Thanks, Counsel Stabeners.
Uh, yeah, I, I just want to, if, I just want to reiterate what I'm hearing, just to see if, if, um, so to summarize, what you're saying is you, the best course for council at this time may be to wait until after the public hearing before we start suggesting changes. Um, and, and then once, once we have that, we can propose any changes based on the feedback we receive, um, and, and at this time, you know, while, while maybe advantageous, um, and maybe a little bit premature.
Through the chair, council statement, yes, it is, it's such a technical document, and it's so hard for the public to follow the changes that have been made. We have a big change tracker, there was over a hundred changes since May twenty-eighth, right? So if we make some changes now, and then some changes at first reading, and we do a public hearing, and we make more changes, it might be tricky for people to understand, and some of those changes may be substantial. We want, we want to be super transparent to the public.
Trying to see if I can wordsmith something better here then.
So, so, so the motion is on the table right now.
Yes.
Yeah, it's an interesting chicken egg.
Yeah.
Thing, yeah, so I see merits both ways. Uh, and, and it's, it's interesting, because it, it opens up that temptation, because I'd like to talk about panhandle lots and averaging and way, way too deep, uh, a low, it interests me, and it, and it has impact, so it, it's an interesting thing, so I, I go with the flow.
Okay, and then before I call the question, uh, I just want to let council know that the goal here is to provide information, have staff provide information to us on the January fourteenth, not to direct any changes, but to see what it could look like. Counselor Barron?
So just a question to the planner, um, so based on your understanding right now in this conversation, and of course, this is advisory to council, is, can you do this as a pretty simple little addition to your presentation when we get to that point? Like, this is not a big exercise for you.
Through the chair, yeah, we can definitely do it, I have a bunch of graphic paper in my desk that has all these diagrams on there, so we'll just digitize some of it, so that it looks pretty for, for council at a presentation on fourteen.
Okay. Also, I got all sorts of colored pens. Uh, is there anything else before I call the question? All those in paper? Posed? Passed? Counselor Barron, I'm sorry, Counsel Orlando opposed. Uh, moving on to nine, the staff reports, P R C, twenty twenty-four committee to approve public events, year-end report.
Thank you, so.
Oh, sorry, just a point of order, I was, I've been clear that, so the motion at hand, I thought was to um, add the request the change at this point, not the zoning bylaws, that, or we were at the zoning bylaw, uh, move forward with, uh, so I was just a bit unclear as actually what was on the table there. Um, I thought it was uh, specifically just to ask for one request here.
It, so the motion on the table was that staff reexamine the requirements for minimum frontage in the R L D one zone for new subdivisions.
For new subdivision?
Yes, and so the reexamination, according to uh, Director Simon, is that he will bring his graphs to the January fourteenth meeting for council to view, not to actually make those amendments.
Okay, and, and just a point of clarity, um, a, a staff does not need a resolution to uh, have this come forward in January, is it by due course, just head in there, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Through the chair, that's correct, yeah, we're not, the, the main purpose of today was if there's any huge red flags for council to be able to voice it, to, for council to have any information before, for consideration.
Okay.
And.
And one last thing, I have two.
So, um, before we go into the next agenda, you know, you're just, are you at this time saying sensitive, or it could be deferred to a future meeting?
It's uh, it's just one.
I, I can speak to that a little bit, um, Ms. Maddow was not here, but basically the uh, twenty twenty-four, it's for information only. She just wanted to share the year-end report, Counselor Devlin does sit on that committee, so if there were any questions, he could answer them probably fairly quickly.
Sounds like it would be quick.
Could put a motion to defer to the next meeting.
For clarification, is that available?
It is not available, no, but we do need a second.
We need a second.
Stabeners, seconds. Uh, what call a question? Through the hand, it's handed. Oh, uh, call it.
All those in favor?
Sure. We've got another meeting after this. Uh, communications, Neil?
That's correct, the correspondence was moved to the beginning, so. Yes. No, but we have another meeting.
Much obliged, terminate meeting? Counsel Stabeners, seconded by Counsel Devlin. Would you like a five-minute break before we go to the next meeting?
Two minutes and fifteen seconds.
We'll take a few minute, few moment break before we head into the meeting.
Would you mind pause our commuting call, Janet's just going to.
Ms. Delisell, we're looking at coming back, uh, be ready.
Ready when you are.
Oh. It's not, I'd like to call this special council meeting to order at five fifty with adoption of the agenda. Counselor Devlin, seconded by Counselor Palmer. Uh, adoption of the minutes, of the regular council minutes dated December ten, twenty twenty four. Oh, sorry. Call a question. I'll, those are favor, thank you. Um, yes. I'd like adoption of the minutes for the regular council meeting for December ten, twenty twenty four. Counselor Stapenhurst, seconded by.
Would that be deferred to the next regular council meeting?
Sorry, Your Worship. Um, if they are deferred, then the bylaw cannot be rescinded because it's not adopted.
Good thing it wasn't seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Devlin. Not that one. All those in favor?
Uh, let me think. Okay.
All those in favor? Is there any business arising from the regular council minutes this dated December tenth, twenty twenty four? Outside of what we're going to look at?
Uh, I'd like to put a motion on the table that the minutes also be included on the next regular agenda. Forget a second, I'll explain once.
Seconded by Stapenhurst?
Yeah. So the, the reason for that, I wasn't prepared. I haven't reviewed the, the minutes. Uh, so that's my uneasiness and, uh, there's probably nothing, but there might be something I just like to have that opportunity to review appropriately.
I don't disagree. That's noted. Uh, call the question. All those in favor? Unanimous? Uh, number five A bylaws. Somebody like to put this on the table? Counselor Devlin?
Move that zoning amendment by law number two, four, zero, two, rescinded.
Seconder? Counselor Palmer? Would you like to speak to it?
Uh, yes. So I feel personally that zoning amendment by law number two, four, zero, two should be rescinded. And therefore I put a motion on the table that zoning amendment by law number two, four, zero, two should be rescinded.
Counselor Stapenhurst, do you have any comments? Looks like you're H there.
Maybe, maybe an explanation as to why we're seeing this being rescinded?
I'm going to go to our staff member. For, for, oh.
So, um, to the chair, if I may, so uh, I will take fault for this. We did not send out landlord or letter notifications for the, um, for the zoning amendment that council had considered this past Tuesday due to the Canada post strike. It was the first week of the strike. We didn't send them out. Senior staff did not foresee that issue. And we literally noticed it on Wednesday at eleven o'clock. And immediately thereafter, we spoke with the corporate officer, um, and we sorted a path forward where they will be hand delivered during the strike. It is unfortunate. We, I do apologize. This is completely on, on myself, uh, no one else, and we should have foreseen this. It's unfortunate. We spoke with the applicant. The applicant is okay. We will have to deliver next week and this matter will be reconsidered by council on January fourteenth. And we've reviewed this in light of the zoning bylaw comprehensive rewrite. And because the developer's zone that they're getting under the new zoning bylaw will not be changing as a result. And because the C D zone will be dissolved, it won't have an impact on the bylaw rewrite. But again, um, I do just want to apologize to council because this was my mistake.
I appreciate that, uh, that explanation. Hopefully the C O takes it easy on you for this. Uh, Counselor Palmer?
Uh, yes, just a question to staff. Um, now which meeting was the, the first, second, third written adoption?
On Tuesday.
So Mayor Cherry, I do not accept that staff are wearing the responsibility. I think the responsibility squarely lies with council because we're rushing through these zoning procedural things. I know I've gone on at length before, but that's what's happening when we rush through first, second, third, and adoption in one meeting. Thanks.
Counselor Stapenhurst?
Perhaps the reason we're in a housing crisis is because we constantly delay permits. Uh, this was an oversight based on a union strike. Uh, it was unforeseeable. Uh, mistakes happen as we do.
Appreciate everybody's feedback. Uh, as this is on the table, I believe it's time to call a question. All those in favor, rescinding the bylaw? Unanimous? Someone likes to put number two on the table? Counselor Stapenhurst?
Move that the issuance of development permit, D P two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, one, three be rescinded.
Seconder? Counselor Palmer, uh, do we need any more feedback on this? Are you guys okay if we just call the question? Like to call a question? All those in favor? Again, unanimous. Uh, number three? Counselor Stapenhurst?
I move that the legislative public notification for consideration of the rezoning application be conducted by other means, hand delivered and digitally for council consideration of a new zoning amendment by law and development permit on January fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty five.
I will second this. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, I will just note, um, that, uh, I do agree with one of the council department's earlier, uh, decision or comments about, um, the importance of this responsibility is on council and on staff. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Any other comments before I call a question? Mr. Parliament?
Um, staff work is a team, okay? And when things like this happen, it's not just one department, it's staff, it's us, it's senior management, it's, it's all the departments. Um, this was a mistake. There was a Canada post-strike. Um, they should have been delivered hand, delivered to each residence. If we could set back the clock, we would have handled it differently. But, you know, as in, as your person, as your appointed, uh, chief administrative officer in charge of staff, um, I accept this as a responsibility of all of us at the staff level. This is not to point fingers at one department. Um, staff made a mistake by not getting these notices delivered. So we accept that. It's a mechanical thing. So we're just following procedure. We send the bylaw, hit the reset button. Um, I applaud, uh, Director Simon by going back to the applicant, confirming that they have no issue with this. Sometimes these things happen. So it's a complete mea culpa. That's what happened. So I just want to make it clear that it is not necessary to, uh, have one director assume responsibility. This is just a city of Revelstoke staff mistake. Okay? We're a team here and we're just letting council know that. So thank you.
I cannot speak for all of council, but you're one seven control.
Appreciate the feedback. Um, Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Cherry. Um, yeah, so, uh, just uh, you know, it's an interesting little dialogue. Rescinding bylaws happens all the time in communities. It's like, it, it's like a tiny mistake, like we're making it like it's a big thing. It's really not a big thing. Really isn't. And, um, so I, there's no blame at all on anybody. And you caught the little error before we moved on. It's pretty, pretty normal to catch little things, whatever they are. It happens all the time. Thanks.
Counselor Stapenhurst?
Thank you. That's why I believe that Counselor Palmer is just rejoicing in the fact that we have to debate this.
Well, so far we've heard that it's council's fault, that it's, uh, development services fault, that it's every department's fault. Uh, but, uh, things happen. I don't think it's anyone's fault. Um, mistakes do occur. I appreciate.
The city's correcting it. The city's correcting it. That's the bottom line.
And Counselor Palmer gets a nice, I told you so for his.
Yeah, we're not gonna let him have that. Counselor Devon, any more comments? Anybody else before I call a question? All right. Uh, I'd like to call a question. All those in favor? Unanimous. Uh, Ms. Delisell, do we have any questions from the press?
One moment, please. We do not have any questions from the press, Your Worship.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to call for termination of the meeting. Oh, look at that. Counselor Stapenhurst seconded by Counselor Devlin. Uh, all those in favor?
All right. I have a question. If I was the press, how would I email? We still have time. Cause you know.
Can you push me, please?